Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Seigo ani buju endio wachea kuekuei. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. And to bring our good minds and hearts together as one, to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is of deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Thank you. So we have nothing under Committee of the Whole, closed meeting. Approval of the Addits. We have a motion of congratulations, two motions of condolences. We have the withdrawal of two delegations, and then the addition of a third delegation. And we have an additional report from Planning Committee. Can I have a mover for the Addits, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Ossanik. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations this evening, but we do have delegations. Now, delegations number one and two have been withdrawn, so this... So we have a third delegation, and I think this would probably be a good time to ask for any additional delegations. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that Bylaw 2010-1, clause 11.4 and 11.5, be waived to add a delegation. Ms. Tracy Wilson to speak to new motion number three with respect to gun control, and that the same clause is be waived again to allow Orin Niallman to speak to motion number three with respect to gun control, please.
Can I get that name? Can I, councillor McLaren, can I get that second name, please?
Orin Niallman.
Okay, so those are two separate delegations, is that correct? Okay, so we will entertain that as one motion to add those two names, so, and then I will look for any other delegations. So please vote. And that carries. Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. I have two things. One is, I just forgot to declare my pecuniary interest, so can I quickly do it now?
You can do that right now.
Thank you. I, Lisa Ossanik of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion number one, requesting that the province not reduce the number of public health units, and that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, which funds the public health units.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also like to move a motion to waive procedural bylaw 2010-1, that's moved by me, seconded by councillor Bone, that the procedural bylaw be waived to allow a delegation by John Williamson to speak to new motion number three regarding Bill C71.
Okay, we'll call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Councillor Ostroff?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I have a request for an additional delegation, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Chappell, that procedure bylaw 2010-1 be waived to allow Kelly Molinson from the Front Neck Rifle and Pistol Club be allowed to speak as a delegation regarding motion number three in relation to Bill C71. Thank you.
Okay, please vote. And that carries. Last call for delegations. Very good. So now we will move to the first delegation on our agenda, which should actually be listed as number three in the Addits. We invite Dr. Kieran Moore, Medical Officer of Health, KFLNA Public Health, to appear before council to speak with respect to new motion number one. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councillors. I'd also like to recognise the Chair of the Board of Health, Mr. Dennis Doyle, who's here today, who's also the Mayor of Front Neck Island, and Susan Stewart and Chris Millen, who are directors associated with Public Health here to morally support me. I'm here just to provide information on the modernisation process that has been proposed by the provincial government, and to inform you and answer any questions regarding this process. I wanted to remind you that the role of public health, that we are part of everyone's day in KFLNA. We protect the food you eat, the water you drink, the air you breathe, and we protect on an ongoing basis against infectious diseases and other threats to the public's health. We are a dedicated group of over 200 staff, supporting 200,000 in KFLNA, including nurses, dieticians, speech pathologists, public health inspectors, and we work behind the scenes every day to protect your health. We inspect your daycare centres, your restaurants, your long-term care facilities, and support your nursing mothers and families. We provide dental screening and care, and immunise. Some of our immunisation strategies also prevent cancer, including our human papillomavirus strategy, which prevents cervical cancer in women, and our hepatitis B strategy, which we provide in elementary schools, which not only prevents hepatitis, but also prevents liver cancer. I believe we should also recognise that we have one of the highest immunisation rates in the province for measles, and we've worked diligently to achieve that high rate with our families, our physicians, and our community members. We have over a 98% vaccination rate in this community, much higher than the provincial average. And for our HPV vaccination strategy, we're at over 70%, whereas the provincial average is at 56. We've worked hard to gain your trust and work in this community. We have participated with this municipality and our community on multiple strategies, including the Mayor's Task Force on Housing, the Community Wellness and Safety Strategy, the Community Drug Strategy. We are here to protect and promote the health of the community, and we work collaboratively with our partners. Our goal is to improve the health status of all members of our community, so we try to work on health inequity strategies as well, to contribute to a sustainable health system. Right now, 1.6% of the provincial health budget goes towards public health. It's roughly $750 million. The province has declared that it will reduce that amount by over $200 million. The share of core public health funding has not changed in over five years. Reminding you that investment in public health is an investment in protection and health promotion. For every dollar we would provide to immunise children, we save $16 in cost savings at a health systems level. Every dollar that we invest in healthy, early childhood development saves $9 in overall system costs. And these are just some of the cost savings that public health provides. The government has said that they will be changing from 35 local public health agencies to 10 regional entities, and that will be occurring by 2020, 2021. So your municipal dollars that go towards your local public health agency may go elsewhere. They may go to a regional entity that's based out of Ottawa, and we can't guarantee the same level of service, nor the same level of immunisation that we currently have. It may change the scope of work that your local public health agency has been able to contribute to protect the health of everyone in this community. They will also be potentially adjusting the municipal cost share, and that rate at a municipal level may, through this regional entity, be forced to increase. This annual cut to $200 million of funding for health protection and health promotion is an enormous hit to public health across this province. Their goal is to develop a regional strategy to quote-unquote "modernise" Ontario public health, and to have consistency in programming across the province. We have worked with our regional partners, our regional health agencies, to create that consistency, and have great partnerships across with Hastings Prince Edward and Leeds Grenville Land Arch. The financial impact on public health and on KFLA will be significant. Currently, our provincial grant is at $9.3 million. That obviously will have to come down, and the regional entity may be asking our municipal partners to contribute more.
Thirty seconds.
So I can stop there and take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. Thank you, Dr. Moore, for your presentation and for the good work of the public health unit. I'm wondering if you could talk a bit more about the rationale that the government has given for these reductions in services. You mentioned modernisation, but could you play that out for us a bit?
I've read some of the documents that they provided. They want to have a consistency of programming. Right now, there's several small health units with a population of 35,000 to less than 100,000. Clearly, we're not one of those. A population of 200,000 is a reasonable population to be able to serve at a local level, when good partnership with municipal partners. And they may be using this modernisation process to make or force amalgamations of those smaller health units, which are chiefly in the South West and the North West and North East. That may be one of their goals, and to create standardisation across all programming. But as I say, we're one of the leaders in providing public health services in the province, with some of the highest rates of immunisation and best partnerships with the health system. I would think you could read through the lines, modernisation really means a reduction in overall spending in public health.
Thank you. My second question is, could you talk a bit about what these cuts will mean to our local health unit? How will that affect us here?
Okay. We have not received our budget letter as of yet. We've been told that that should come within the next four to six weeks. We've been told by April 2020, our Board of Health will stop functioning, and there will be a regional board. And that could be a regional board representing any geography in the south-east of this province. So it could extend from Hastings all the way to Ottawa. So our board is municipally run, locally governed, we're responsive to our local needs. That level of responsiveness, I think, will be absolutely less on a regional entity, especially if it's five health agencies going to one with one board. We only may have one member representing all of us from this region at a regional board, instead of the five municipal members that govern us at a local level at present.
Councillor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Moore, could you please explain what you mean by "it'll stop functioning"? That sounds like an abrupt change, and how do you prepare for something like that?
They only have given us a three-page letter describing their intent on the modernisation process to date. But we have been told quite clearly that as of April 2020, the regional entities will be in place. That will be the governance for all of local public health, that our funds, which are now controlled by KFLNA, a municipally-run board, will go to this municipally-run regional board, a much larger geography, and they will be controlling how funds are used across a much larger geography. And that regional board will have municipal representation, provincial appointees, and they will be making the decisions of where the funds go. If we're partnered with an Ottawa, for example, I have grave concerns that they're now integrated within a city, and they have to disentangle themselves from their city government, and then start paying for their own HR department, their own IT, their own informatics and corporate services. That will take up a lot of funds, and it may be that Kingston will be contributing to those costs and not providing the same level of service that we've had in the past.
Councillor Holland.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation. I'm curious, I know that there's a lot of work to date that's been going on, both with the Association of Local Health... Sorry, Local Public Health Alpha, as we know it, and also with other municipalities on this issue, and whether you could speak to those efforts and what the motion is looking for tonight from us as a city, and how that will benefit that?
Well, number one, we really, we very much, all 200 staff at KFLA appreciate the motion that's been put forward by council. And Alpha has been working diligently along the similar lines, and I have to celebrate Dennis Doyle, who's gone to recent press briefings at the City of Toronto and voiced the same concerns. We all want the government to review this regionalisation process. We're very concerned about the loss of municipal control and the costs of this type of amalgamation that would take place. If they want to save $200 million, we all, I think, know that amalgamation costs, union costs, are significant, and that's a three-to-five-year, very expensive journey, when we're already one of the highest-functioning agencies locally in Ontario already.
Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Recently, the Chair of Toronto Public Health, Joe Cressy, was quoted as saying that people are going to die as a result of these cuts. Do you feel that's an exaggeration, or is he right on?
I should note that Toronto is being differentially affected by this. Their funding ratio is going from 70% of provincial funding down to 50. They're in a much different position than we will be. And I could understand his concern when you're going from learning, losing $65 million, I think that they were going to lose on annual funding for their budget, that's 650 staff that are working on the front lines of keeping people healthy. I think that's not underestimating the potential impact. It's not as severe an impact here, because we're not going from a 70 to a 50% ratio.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move to our second delegation. We'll invite Tracy Wilson, who will appear before council to speak to council with respect to new motion number three regarding Bill C71.
My name is Tracy Wilson, and I am the Vice President of Public Relations for the Canadian Coalition for Firearms Rights. But more than that, I stand before you today as a legal-restricted firearms owner, a mother and a grandmother, and a woman who's enjoyed the shooting sports for over 25 years safely and responsibly. I would like to ask you today to think critically about the motion you are considering to ban the legally-acquired property from licensed RCMP-vetted gun owners. I would like to start by thanking you for this opportunity and sharing with you some credible, accurate data on this topic and its related issues. I have also appeared before the House of Commons Committee as an expert witness, the House of Commons Committee on Public Safety and National Security, as well as the Senate Committee on National Security and Defence. So we're going to start with an easy one. Assault weapons have been banned in this country since 1978 with the implementation of C17. If there is a new, reformed definition of an assault weapon, that has not yet been identified by the federal government, the RCMP, or any other governing body. I can't imagine any city council would want to vote on something they can't yet determine even exists. So with that, let's focus on handguns. Handguns are among Canada's most regulated firearms, requiring extensive training, additional courses, a complex and robust vetting and background check system. All handguns in Canada are registered. They also require additional security protocols for transporting to the five permissible places a legal gun owner can even take them to. Because we know Canadians are among the world's most peaceful and law-abiding citizens, it is of no surprise to anyone here that over half a million Canadians own them and enjoy the shooting sports without issue. Many of them are residents of this city. To even suggest these people have any link to the rise in crime in Canada is not only disingenuous, it's downright wrong, and it detracts from the focus away from the real problems of this community and many others, the rise in gang crime and the illicit drug trade. A problem that continues to fester and plague this city, one that is difficult but imperative to tackle. And with the support of your constituents, I firmly believe you are not only capable of, but brave enough to do it. The use of the year 2013 as an outlier is common when the debates surrounding crime and violence is void of fact. 2013 was a statistical anomaly, the lowest rate in over 40 years. Every year for four decades before 2013 had a higher homicide rate, so it is not shocking that every year since would also. If we take a more appropriate sample, we actually see that homicide rates are in fact stable. The idea of a ban on legal handguns is one rooted in emotion, and in contrast to the claims of this motion, it is not supported by Canada's top cops. And I quote Vancouver Police Chief Adam Palmer, "Canada's current gun control regime is actually quite good, and the association is not calling for any wholesale legislative changes related to gun violence." Toronto Police Association President Mike McCormick on a handgun ban, "There's no way in my world, or any world I know, that this would have an impact on somebody who's going to go out, buy an illegal handgun, and use it to kill another person or shoot another person." Brenda Lucky, RCMP Commissioner, "I am not sure a handgun ban is the answer to gun violence." According to Stats Canada, less than 1% of all domestic calls even have a firearm present at the address, let alone used or threatened. I hope you realise that banning handguns directly takes them out of the gun safes of women like me."
Thirty seconds.
The idea that the number of domestically sourced firearms has now increased to 50% or more has also been widely debunked, and I brought the A tip for you to read. In closing, I don't want to stand before you only to defend my sport and the millions of other good, hard-working gun owners. I want to ask you, no, I want to help you find a solution that would bring real sense to your community. I would suggest that, like the federal government, you nominate a committee of community representatives of experts in their field to study this, look through the evidence, examine it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
So we'll just pause, we'll just pause there. Are there any questions from council? Yes, councillor Bone.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. You said in your delegation there, presentation, that a lot of people very high up, that are part of gun control and basically enforcement, have basically debunked this in a sense. Is that accurate, to say that this really would almost have no benefit?
Well, that's right. I mean, you know, I think we all want to say for Canada, and if we want to target crime and violence, we have to target the people who are doing it. It's not your hunters, or your local IPSEC shooters, or your members of your local ranges and clubs that are committing the crime out in the streets. So while I applaud the effort to do something about the violence, I think we need to target the people who are actually committing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Chappell.
Yes, Ms. Wilson, I would like to know a little bit more about this idea you were about to broach with regards to a community committee of experts that you would think would be help educate the citizens of Kingston.
Well, I think the gun control issue is a very complex issue, and I think it's been misunderstood for, well, for decades. And I see the benefit of gathering people from your community. Your community has interests that are unique to it, challenges that other communities or municipalities might not have. For instance, you have some federal prison here, right? Which is something that not every community experiences. You've got people in this room right here who work in the prison system, who are also legal gun owners, who are firearms instructors. You've got people who work with women's groups. There's all kinds of people you could gather, put them to work as volunteers, get them to study this issue, and report back to you, and, you know, advise you on what the problem is and what some possible solutions for your community might be.
Yes, you have two questions.
A lot of the focus of this motion that's been brought forward surrounds C71. And having spoken before the House of Commons, as well as the Senate, it would strike me that that bill is pretty much well on its way. Do you have an idea of the status of that bill at this current time?
Yes, yesterday, the Senate Committee, who studied the bill, the Senate Committee on National Security and Defence, presented the committee report. So the committee was tasked with studying the bill, studying the law. I mean, you can't expect the entire Senate to be an expert on every topic, so that's why they divide them into committees. They heard from over 80 expert witnesses. They put forward a series of motions that they all voted on, came to an agreement, took that report back to the full Senate, and had this, presented it to the Senate, which it was rejected. So, you know, I think at this point, it's one of those things where the story was already written before the homework was done. So C71 will likely pass possibly tomorrow, and no part of C71 includes a handgun ban. They're two separate issues.
Deputy Mayor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. Why do you think Toronto and Montreal, presumably who have pretty significant research departments, would have made the decision to support a motion like this one?
Well, I think votes. John Tory is on record in 2014 saying that he doesn't support a handgun ban when it was brought forward within council, when he was a council member before he was a mayor. He's on record saying he doesn't support it. You know, there is a big push for gun control in the urban centres, and I think when you fail to address crime, and you've got to answer to your constituents, they want to see you doing something, anything. And, you know, because we've, he's been unsuccessful at this point in actually addressing the issue, he needs to put forward that he's done something. I think his intentions are good, I just think his methods are bad.
And just a subsequent question. You didn't get a chance to discuss semi-automatic weapons, which is also part of this motion. I suspect you probably wanted to. Do you have any comment or any... I actually struggle to find a good kind of Canadian definition of a semi-automatic weapon. Can you sort of talk a little bit about semi-automatic weapons and maybe give us a good definition of that?
Absolutely. So there are semi-automatic firearms, and there are three different classifications of firearms in Canada. You have non-restricted, which traditionally is your hunting rifles and shotguns. You've got restricted, which would be your handguns and your AR-15s, and then prohibited, which would be your full automatics, and, you know, there are a variety of other ones, but for this, you know, to respect time, that's how we'll define it. Prohibited means you can't have them. So we're down to restricted and non-restricted. There are semi-automatic... My hunting rifle that I hunt deer with, which is a Browning Bar 270, is a semi-automatic. It looks like something your grandpa would own, you know, but a semi-automatic still expends one cartridge per trigger depression. So basically, every time you want to fire a shot, you've got to pull the trigger. It's not, you know, it's not a spray and pray where you're pulling the trigger and, you know, more bullets are coming out. It requires a human action to make each, every single bullet come out. So those are firearms that are in the non-restricted category, which are not registered, you know. Everyday firearms owners own them. In fact, 2.2 million Canadians do, and own them without issue.
Can I just get a clarification?
Only two questions. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our next delegation, we'll invite Orin Niallman to speak to council. Apologies if I got the name wrong, but please come on up. And again, this is to speak to councillor, respect to new motion number three regarding Bill C71.
Hi there, I'm Orin Niallman. I don't have the expertise that Ms. Wilson does. I live just above Olivier at Brock and King. I'm a, I hunt, I own firearms, and I target shoot when I can. I wanted to speak against the motion. I'm actually a fairly left-leaning guy who tends to go the other way when it comes to the gun stuff, but I wanted to argue that the motion's fairly misguided. I think it has very little significant positive impact on public safety, and it serves mostly as a wedge issue between residents of big cities and residents elsewhere. Councillor Hill was asking about why people from Toronto and Montreal are more likely to support this kind of thing, and why the cities themselves do. I grew up in Toronto. It's, where I grew up, I didn't know anyone who owned a firearm. It's a very, very different thing, and where I grew up, it's easier for it to be a foreign or scary thing when you have no exposure to any firearm that isn't on a police officer's hip. Growing up in Toronto, I didn't know anyone who'd ever had a fun day at the firing range, or had a dinner with friends and family over roast duck that you shot out on the pond. And if you don't have that sense of context, it's very easy to feel like something is scarier than it is. scarier than it is. I feel like exposure and context informs our assessment of risk. And I feel like just as people, we're all naturally not automatically very good at assessing risk, and no one can think that deeply about every single issue. I think if you live in Toronto, or Montreal, or Vancouver, and you don't have a lot of exposure to hunting or target shooting, it's easy not to have to think that hard over the issue, and that's why it's really easy to have support that strongly for measures like this. I think in a place like Kingston, where you have a lot more people who are hunters or target shooters, I think, I think there should be less support for a measure like this. I own semi-automatic firearms. I hunt more than I target shoot, but that's mostly because it's really hard to get a membership at the firing range here in Kingston because the waitlist is pretty long. But I have firearms that are semi-automatic. I keep them safely and legally locked in my safe. And in the scheme of things, they pose very little risk to public safety, even after including the risk of diversion for illicit or malicious purposes by other people. I also drive a car. I have friends who have swimming pools. There's an Elsie Bureau on the corner that has alcohol. And all of those things, in aggregate, pose a greater public safety risk than the semi-automatic firearms that are in my gun safe. I think a ban on semi-automatic firearms serves less as an improvement of public safety and more as a wedge issue between people who use them and people who grew up in, sorry, between people who grew up in large cities with no exposure to them and people who grew up in places like this, where there are a lot of people who hunt and enjoy target shooting. I don't think it has much impact on public safety to prohibit them. I don't think there's much reason to support a motion like this. And if I've put this forward badly, I don't do this very often, so I hope I acquitted myself reasonably well here. I also think that the people who put forward this motion are good guys who are arguing in good faith. We disagree on this issue, but if I ever run into you guys downtown, next beer's on me. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to me ramble.
That's the first time I've ever heard that offer made from a delegation. That's very good.
Counsel McLaren, put me on the list to argue against him. I have a ton of respect for that. I can't not.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's everything.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Deputy Mayor Hill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to ask you to give me sort of the contrary view of this statement, okay? That's going to be my question.
Yes, sir.
The Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police claimed that semi-automatic guns were basically designed as an instrument of war and that they had no sporting use either in the cultural or recreational sense. The association thus urged Ottawa to restrict all semi-automatic weapons as a category. So how do you reconcile sort of your viewpoint with what the chiefs of police are saying?
Now, I'm not an expert on military armaments. I was a reservist for a few years, but not in a position to gain that much expertise on it. I would say that semi-automatic firearms, if they were designed originally in a military context, weren't subject to the kind of restrictions that semi-automatic centerfire firearms in Canada are. All the centerfire semi-auto guns in Canada are limited to a five-round capacity. So the thing that makes a semi-auto firearm better able to be used in a warfare capacity doesn't apply when it's the guns that are allowed to be owned in Canada. Five rounds is useful for hunting or target shooting. There are those who would argue for a higher capacity allowance, but that's not the subject here. I'd also suggest there are plenty of things that, if they're originally designed for use in warfare, it's not as relevant in terms of how it's actually used in a non-military capacity. GPS systems, as I understand it, were originally designed for guided missiles. I don't think there is an overwhelming public safety hazard in allowing semi-automatic firearms, and I certainly don't think there's a safety hazard that's in line with the attention given to them. There are plenty of other things in society that we allow that have some level of marginal aggregate risk. Alcohol access, swimming pools, access to having a personal car when you don't strictly need it to survive. Those are all things we allow, and many of them, like alcohol and pools, we allow because it's weighed against intangible things like we enjoy them. I think in a debate about public safety, there's a place, there's a place for talking about the scale of the risks involved. And I think the number of semi-automatic firearms that are diverted from legal owners to illicit purposes are so lightning-strike rare that the idea of banning it isn't in line with the risks involved.
So you mentioned that the five-shot minimum.
Maximum, sorry.
Maximum, sorry, comes in, I'm assuming, a clip. You're a former military person. How quickly could you replace a clip?
Not as quick as I used to be.
How quick?
Second or two. But the truth is, a pump-action shotgun can hold more because it's not limited to the same things. It's not that, it's not any more dangerous than any other firearm that isn't. I wouldn't say it's more dangerous significantly because of the mag restriction than most things that you'd think of as your grandfather's hunting rifle. I think it's just an, yeah, I'll stop there.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our next delegation. We'll invite John Williamson to speak to council with respect to new motion number three regarding Bill C-71.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just background, I farm just north of the city of Kingston, and I'm here as a director of the Frontac Federation of Agriculture. We've lived here, out there, my family, on the farm for ninety-some-odd years. My mother is now 98, except for the last three years that she's in a nursing home. She's lived her whole life in a house with firearms, so we've, we're aware of the situations and the guns. I'm not going to speak to the issue on assault weapons. Tracy spoke to that well. Handguns, I'm only going to speak very briefly to it, that there are a lot of regulations around them now, the responsible owners. I carried one for close to 30 years at work, never had a problem with it. I don't have one now, and I don't plan on having one now. I'm not going to address most of your where-ases, other than the one that only mention, really, of semi-automatic guns in the where-ases is in the second one. And I'm not quite sure how it got lumped in with handguns and assault rifles, but I think it's of a misnomer, a misunderstanding of what a semi-automatic gun is in the sense of watching too many American shows and military shows, that they're very much used in sporting and hunting. I worked with Natural Resources and the Canadian Wildlife Service for approximately 30 years. Probably half of the hunters that I encountered in over that time, which would be in the thousands, carried semi-automatics. Never had a problem with any of them. From a farm perspective and the Federation of Agriculture perspective, many of our members hunt, but many of us have livestock, also have problems with predators, as you're fully aware. The municipality pays compensation if we lose them. We want to be able to take action at home if we need them, and I say most of us have semi-automatics along with other firearms. I'll address the clip issue that came up earlier. If you go back to, we heard previous speakers speak about your grandfather's gun, the old lever actions, you could put seven or eight in them. You're not bound, it's today even, you can, there's no limit to what the capacity of the magazine is. I guess I would ask that you not support this motion. I think at least I would require, request that you defer it to the Rural Affairs Committee to get their view and consult with the agricultural community. I think that's an area that has been missed at this stage, and I really think that the motion doesn't do what you're hoping it will do. Two of the firearms are already looked after adequately in legislation, and the third is not a military weapon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Hill.
And I'm going to say this with all due respect, because I know lots of very respectful gun owners who, you know, understand the seriousness of that kind of a possession. And so I'm going to reference a few terrible situations that happened, and just to make sure that you're aware of them, because I know that most gun owners would be very concerned about these.
So I'll give you a little bit of preamble, but any questions?
Preamble done. So the Montreal massacre, the four RCMP officers in Mayrethorpe, Alberta, the three RCMP officers in Moncton, and the Quebec mosque shooting. All of those events happened with a semi-automatic weapon. So I'm hearing, on the one hand, that semi-automatic weapons are not a danger to the public, and yet I'm seeing evidence to suggest otherwise. Can you sort of reconcile that for me?
I think what you got to look at is that what the particular firearm is, I'm not sure what they're occurring in that situation in Montreal, but if they could very well be a military-grade weapon that had a much larger clip.
It was a Ruger Mini-14, semi-automatic.
You may, you know, the previous speaker spoke about switching clips in a second or two. I would suggest that most people would, by the time they get a clip out of their pocket or out of a pack sack, it's going to be a lot longer than a minute or two, so. You know, we just saw the last, a year ago, the number that were killed on a bus in Saskatchewan. You know, we haven't banned buses yet that I'm aware of, or trucks, you know. I think it's a legitimate sport, the legitimate owners, and I don't think that this motion is the way to deal with it. I really don't.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and our final delegation of the evening, we will invite Kelly Malanson to speak to council with respect to new motion number three.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kelly Malanson. I am somebody who's going to be speaking on behalf of FRPC, which is our, one of our local ranges. It's on Mackintosh Lane. I am, I wasn't expecting to speak this evening, but I was asked to because of the fact that I'm also the VP for Women's Programs for the Canadian Coalition for Firearms Rights. I'm also a peace officer, so I work at Joyceville Assessment Unit, so I interact with those that are incarcerated every day. So what I do in that capacity is I'm a programs officer, so I will look at risk. I will look at risk mitigation. Actually, today I'm, today I spent most of my day writing reports for a border Canada. So I sent you an email yesterday. I hope you had a chance to read it. I am going to go through some of the points that I tried to address in it. I am a resident here in Kingston. I live in Waterloo Village. I am a competitive shooter. I'm Canada's first rifle woman, or rifleman. I'm also, I hold that title down in the US as well. I am also a firearms instructor. I went down to the US and participated in a competition there. That competition was fantastic. It focuses on safety, and it focuses on accuracy, and it focuses on making you a better shooter as well. I, along with another group of individuals, five of us, when we were down in the US, we decided to bring that program back to Canada because that's the piece that's missing. So what we do as Canadians is we, we're not Americans, so what that means is we have different responsibilities, different things that we have to do with respect to firearms. Firearms are privileged here in Canada. They're not a right. So in order to do that, we work very hard to keep that privilege as well. That means that we go and, as Tracy spoke about, it means we actually go and, we have to take firearms course. We have to learn about safety. We have to prove that we're safe as well. Not only do I hold my pal, I also hold my, our pal as well, which is restrictive as well. That means I'm able to have pistols, which I do. It means I'm able to have AR-15s, which I do as well. I use those in the capacity as competition. It means that I can take those restricted firearms and take them to the range. That's the only place that I can take them. Everything else means I can go out hunting with them, so I can take my semi-automatics that are non-restricted and take those hunting if I want. Or I can take them out to, onto private lands and set up tin cans if I wanted to as well. I understand the concern, especially from the point of view that I'm a peace officer. I interact with those every day that are the people that we're talking about. They are the people that are part, they are the people that are part of those inner cities that we're talking about, Toronto, Montreal. They're the people that are gang members. They're not getting their firearms from SFRC over there. They're getting them from other gang members. These are firearms that are imported illegally through our borders. In my capacity, I ask where, how, why. I'm getting the answers, and it's not me or anybody else who's here in the capacity as a law-abiding gun owner that is contributing to this. In Kingston, I interact with those that are people who live here in Kingston that are incarcerated. Those people, problem, what their problem is, is addictions. Addictions to opiates. There's not a lot of gang members here in Kingston. There are gang members. I'm not saying there aren't. But here in Kingston, your problem is opiates. Your problem is drugs. Your problem is not firearms. I also wanted to talk to you about the people that you're going to impact as well, like SFRC.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, crap. Okay. You're going to impact them, you're going to impact women, women. We need to empower women, okay? Domestic abuse. The guys that I talk to, when we talk about domestic abuse, they're beating, they're choking, strangling, they're using knives. The last piece that they're using is firearm. I, as the VP of Women's Program for the Canadian Coalition for Firearms Rights, I set up events and help coordinate events across the country. These are sold-out events. Women want to come to these events.
Thank you.
Because they want to feel empowered.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So I'm just going to pause, you're going to pause there. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Kyle.
Thank you for your presentation and for doing it last minute. That's excellent, and for sending us an email. I too ask my questions respectfully and earnestly to hear your opinion on it, and it's about two things that you brought up. One is about how guns are obtained by criminals.
Sure.
I was looking at some stats, and according to what I was reading, the number of break and enters to steal weapons, guns in particular, is up three times higher today than it was 10 years ago. And I'm wondering how, in your role, either professionally or outside of work, you see that impacting crime in the community?
Okay. So what I do see with respect to offenders that are committing BNEs, it's based, again, we're linking it back to addictions. So they will break into homes here in Kingston or wherever they are. They will go in. They don't know normally that there are firearms in that home, but they, if they are there, they'll, they will try and get them. But they're generally not used in a capacity that, that person, they might sell it. A lot of times what we'll see is they'll sell the firearms. Again, I ask that question, where are these coming from? And the answers are, they're coming from Toronto, they're coming from gang members. Like, they're paying astronomical fees, $2,500, $3,000 for a pistol that you can get with Ryan for 250 bucks or 300 bucks. When we're talking about homeowners, though, a lot of the homeowners, we will walk, I have to. I abide by the transportation laws, I abide by storage laws. If somebody's breaking into my home, chances are they will not get any firearms I have because of the fact that it's locked, it's, but... To give you an example, Kingston, not specifics with offenders, but I've had two in 10 years that have broken in and gotten firearms and sold them that were Kingston residents. And those were actually, one was a Couy rifle, and one was a 1022, which is another.
Thank you, that gives a bit more context. And my second question is related to something you said around domestic violence. So it's good to have your perspective, but I think there's another side to it, which is that the second most common form of death in situations of domestic violence, usually a man killing a woman, is with firearms. I'm wondering if you could speak to that?
Sure, okay. So when we cause, it speaks to the lethalness, so what we'll see is we'll see. So can you phrase your... phrase your, just repeat your question, because I'm gonna speak to that.
Just wondering about the, the incidence of death by firearms in situations of domestic violence.
Okay. So what we will see is, we'll see assaults. So again, I'm going back to what was the most common. So it is with your fists, with, et cetera. Not a lot of people will die from that. They'll get, they'll be hurt quite extensively, but they won't, won't die from it. Again, what we're talking about is choking, strangulation. Again, it's, it's, it's not as severe of a method. And knives, that's what I see the most of right now, is, is people using knives, and firearms is the smallest percentage, but it is, yes. You have to admit that if you're using a firearm somebody, it's more lethal than if you were actually punching them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Ball?
Thank you, worshiping through you. Just to follow up on that, you, you mentioned kind of the methods where it's kind of starts like physically and then escalates. Would you say that in your experience, there's usually an escalation there and the firearm would tend to be a last resort?
Yes, it's a last, general.
And that there's a good chance that that firearm being used is not being used by a law-abiding gun owner?
Yes.
That's the whole idea as to why they're stored in a separate room in a safe with a key and the ammunition's totally separate? Would you say that that's factual?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Chappell?
This is being debated at the municipal level.
Right.
This is a federal issue.
Yes.
How do you feel about a municipal council attempting to speak on your behalf when you have representation at the federal level?
Okay. So I understand where this is coming from. I want my community to be safe. I want people to be protected. I, it's, it's not a municipal issue. I'm more concerned about paying so much for my water right now and my taxes, to tell you the truth. But right now, it's being examined at a federal level. It's, Tracy just spoke about, there's over 80 witnesses at the Senate, and right now, nobody can agree on it. So if you're trying to make a decision here within a municipality, it's not going to have impact. I can understand where Toronto and Montreal is on this, and the reason is because, again, the people that I interact with most are from those areas, okay? It's a reactionary. They, and again, it comes from a place wanting to make your community safe. I understand that.
Yep.
Given that you're an instructor and involved with the club, would you be willing to offer an introductory session for any counselor around the table that wishes to participate and learn more about guns and, and the safe handling and the fine people that actually participate in the shooting sports?
Yep. So Project Maple Seed is what I actually do as a firearms instructor. I interact with children as young as seven years old, and I also interact with these guys over here. I gotta shoot out there next weekend. These are, are, are military members from CFP Kingston. In my email to you, I extended an invitation. If you're interested, come out. One of the things that you guys need, I just want you guys to be informed, that's why I sent that email, because a lot of times, everything comes from a good place, a good heart. We wanna protect our, our communities, but knowing more and understanding more about what semi auto, you had questions about what is a semi-automatic? Come on out, try it out, understand how long it takes you to actually change a magazine. If a seven-year-old can keep it, keep it safe, I'm sure that you guys can as well. But if you're interested, please let me know, and I'll take you out.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, thank you, and, yes, Counselor Hodgson?
Just wanna ask somewhat, it seems there's a number of different definitions of semi-automatic. And Counselor Hill indicated he couldn't find a consistent definition.
That's correct.
And so what would be the difference between, I've forgotten her full name, the first speaker, Tracy, I think?
Tracy, yeah.
Indicated, single shot.
Yes.
At each depression of the trigger, right?
Correct, that's a semi.
But defined as semi-automatic because you're not reloading, right? So.
No, you can actually reload a semi-automatic.
No, no, you can reload the rifle by the mean for each shot.
So, so we're not gonna have a discussion back and forth? We can, if you just wanna put a question forward?
So, anyway, my point is, my question is this. How would you define the difference between the type of rifle or weapon that was used in the killings in the Quebec mosque and?
Okay.
What she was describing?
Okay. So, so the question is, in the Quebec mosque, what was used? Yes, some of them were semi-automatics, but when I'm talking about those, what you really need to do is focus on things. So what's the ideal, it's, there's 2.3 million Canadians who own firearms. There's 500,000 of those that own restricted. I own a restricted. I have other, other people who are in programs asking me, why? And I said, because, I'm, one, I'm legally abled to do it because of the fact that I went through all of those procedures and all of those checks and balances. The other thing is too, it's my sport, I enjoy my sport. The other thing is, like, I used to work at the running room. I'm a runner. Put a little bit of weight, but anyways, I'm a runner. I've never once felt in danger or unsafe at my local range. I have almost been hit by a car twice. I've been run over, I've actually, so I can enjoy both sports. I feel more unsafe running on Kingston roads as opposed to going to the range.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have no further delegations, so now we will move on to briefings. We have one briefing this evening. Paige Agnew, Director of Planning, Building and Licensing Services, will provide introductory remarks, and will introduce Jamie Cook from Watson and Associates to brief counsel with respect to Clause Two, Report Number 36 from Planning Committee Regarding the Population, Housing and Employment Growth Forecast.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So this evening, we're going to be presenting the recommendations from the Population, Housing and Employment Forecast Study. This is work that my team has been working on collaboratively with Watson and Associates over the last year. It's included a number of public consultation events, some of those with members of council directly, and what you have before you is the final study with the recommendations that look at what we're projecting in terms of the growth of the city over the next 30 years, and specific recommendations related to housing and employment as well. So Jamie Watson is with us this evening from Watson and Associates. We have a presentation and are happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Agnew. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff and the public. So I'm gonna walk through about a 10-minute presentation to provide you the key findings of our long-term population, housing and employment forecast. Going to jump right into the key findings of the presentation. Over the 30-year period, we are projecting the city to grow at a relatively moderate to steady rate of about 0.7% annually per year over that 30-year period from 2016 to 46. I say moderately because we're not growing as fast as the province as a whole, which is expected to grow at a rate of about 1%. But it is important to keep in mind, when you're looking at provincial growth, that the area of central Ontario, which is the Greater Golden Horseshoe area, really does distort that overall provincial number, given its relatively higher growth rate of about 1.7%. When we include all post-secondary students into the, the population base, the city's population's expected to increase by about 29,000 persons and about 11,000 jobs respectively over that 30-year period. And so to accommodate this long-term population forecast, we're going to require about 13,700 new homes in the city of Kingston over the next 30 years. So that's about 550 new dwellings on an annual basis. So wanted to just provide a little bit of background in terms of the approach and some of the key drivers to population growth within the city of Kingston. So as a starting point, we look more broadly at provincial trends, and then as well, a more detailed analysis of population growth at the Kingston CMA level, and we use that broader analysis to then guide our, our forecast at the city level. A couple of key things that I want to, to point out is, one, that the, the population forecast is heavily dependent on net migration. As the population within the city of Kingston ages and the Kingston CMA, the area will become more and more dependent on net migration as a source of population growth. It's also important to, to note that the, the broader conditions of the economy are also highly connected to the long-term potential rate of growth within the city of Kingston. You need to look at the ultimate potential for, for labor force growth and economic growth, which in turn drives that migration and then population. There's a couple of key things that I wanted to point out in terms of those key drivers of population growth within the Kingston CMA. The first is the, the city's and the CMA's importance as a regional commercial center. This area is one of the larger urban centers within the eastern Ontario area. Overall, the population within eastern Ontario and Ontario as a whole is urbanizing. We would expect, we expect to see this area continue to be a growing regional center, attracting a large amount of employment within the commuter shed into the, the CMA over the long term. To a lesser extent, the potential attractiveness of the city to the 55-plus age group is also a key factor that we anticipate will drive net migration into the, into the future within the CMA area. And building on the first point, the city's geographical location along the 401 corridor is also a significant driver of industrial growth and, and growth within the export based sectors within the Kingston CMA and the city of Kingston over the long term. And lastly, it's important to measure and, and consider quality of life. This is a more softer factor that is, been given more attention in, in recent years as it's becoming an increasingly important factor in both business decisions and by residence and location decisions to, to come to a particular area. So it's important to, to consider that as a, as a driver as well. So with respect to the long-term forecast for the city of Kingston, we prepared three long-term population scenarios, a low scenario, a base scenario, and a high scenario. Under the, the base scenario, we're projecting this, the city's population growth to increase at a rate of about 0.5%. Comparatively over the historical period of the last 30 years, that's a bit lower. Historically, the population was growing at about 0.8%. And you can see over time that that population rate is starting to bend down a little bit in, in the base scenario over that long-term period. And that downward trend is, as I mentioned, largely a result of the aging of the population within the city of Kingston and the impact that has on population growth associated with natural increase or what we would define as births less deaths. Under this, the, the low scenario, the population forecast is expected to be rather, rather minimal at a rate of about 0.1%, and that downward bending that we see in the long term is more, is more pronounced under that scenario. And then lastly, under the high scenario, we're projecting an increase of about 0.8%, which is essentially comparable with the, the historical period over the last 30 years. So overall, under that base scenario, we're projecting about 18,600 or so permanent residents within the city of Kingston. Under the employment scenario, we've also prepared three long-term growth scenarios. Similar to the population, we're expecting relatively moderate to steady employment growth, an increase of about 0.5% annually, or about just under 11,000 jobs. The bulk of those jobs, we anticipate to be in the commercial institutional sectors. However, it's important to note that we are experiencing a recovery in the industrial sector, and we're experiencing, and we're expecting to see more growth in industrial over the long term than was, than what was previously projected in the, the 2013 study. And then under the low scenario, we're projecting, similar to population, a relatively modest rate of growth of about 0.1%. And conversely, under the high scenario, about 0.8%. So we wanted to bring the, the full forecast into the picture, looking at both the permanent population as well as those that aren't captured by the census, because obviously that's a key issue for the city of Kingston when we're looking at long-term growth. There's a significant amount of population that's not captured by the census. As you know, most of that population is, is in the, in the student category. So in 2016, we estimate there's about 28,500 full-time students within the city of Kingston, within, attending Queen's University, RMC, and St. Lawrence College. About 83% of those students we've identified are not captured by the census, so we've layered that on top of the, the base forecast to get us a population of about 151,300. Over the forecast period, we expect to see about 36% of the population growth in, coming from the population not captured by the census, so largely students, and the other 64% captured by the permanent population. It is important to note that the student population is growing at a faster rate than the permanent population, so when we add students, it does have an upward impact on the overall rate of growth to about 0.7% as I previously mentioned. So this, this slide here shows the associated housing growth from the population forecast that, that I just presented you. This is looking at incremental growth over time in five-year increments. So as I mentioned earlier, we're expecting an average of 550 new households per year. We do expect that the rate of housing growth will, will moderate and slow over time, again as a result of the aging of the population and the slowing of the population in general. We've noted here that in 2000, the 2016 to 21 period, we are projecting an additional 129 units a year, or just under 650 additional households that would be required to achieve a 3% housing vacancy rate within the city of Kingston. Currently, the vacancy rate's about 0.6%. The current average for the province is about 1.5, the current average in 2017 was about 1.5%, and the longer-term average was about 2.5%. So a 3% vacancy would be a healthy rate that the city would, we would recommend strive to achieve. So that's the intention of the, the red, the red bar. Also important to note that the popul, sorry, the, the housing forecast is steadily shifting in terms of its form from more low-density or ground-oriented housing forms to more high-density housing options. And that's really a factor of two things. One, demographics, as the population ages, and we see more people moving into the 65-plus category, and most particularly the 75-plus category, because that's the category that you'll, you'll see the most growth in the, the higher age groups. We expect to see a higher propensity or demand for high-density dwellings. Also, the cost of housing, as that continues to increase, typically it's increasing at a rate higher than, than income levels within the city. We would also expect to see more demand and pressure for, for high-density housing. In terms of rental housing, we also expect to see a significant amount of housing in the, in the form of rental. Over 50% of the housing in the, the permanent housing stock, we expect to be in the, the housing, the rental category. So in conclusion, in terms of the long-term economic outlook, it's important to recognize that the long-term population and employment potential for the city of Kingston is highly connected to the broader economy of eastern Ontario, and I think the best definition of that broader economy for the, for the purpose of this study is to look at the commuter shed within the city of Kingston. So it's important to, to recognize that, that broader economic potential. In terms of recent job growth, that growth has been largely fueled by development in the service sector economy as well as knowledge-based sectors, and as I mentioned more recently, a gradual recovery in most sectors in the industrial category as well. It's important to understand that the attractiveness of the city of Kingston to new migrants, especially the youth workforce, will be a key factor in sustaining future levels of population and employment growth, and it's key to achieving the net migration levels that we've projected in this forecast. So it's important to recognize that this forecast is not a do-nothing scenario, it's not a status quo scenario. It does assume that efforts are being made and policy decisions are being made to, to work to attract youth and, and particularly, youth migration. In terms of the long-term population growth, as I, as I mentioned, the forecast in the city is an increase of 29,000 people or an annual growth rate of 0.7%. So relative to eastern Ontario, this is a steady amount of population growth. It's growing relatively, relatively consistently with the broader area of eastern Ontario, but relative to the province, we are growing a little bit lower. It's important to recognize that the aging of the population is putting downward pressure on long-term population. on long-term population growth, so it does have a tendency to, to impede that long-term potential. And this isn't, this is not a unique situation to the city of Kingston. Most, if not all municipalities in Ontario are being influenced by the aging of the population. It's also important to note, though, that the aging of the population will have some upward pressure as well, as residents from the surrounding areas in the, that commuter shed, as they age, we're looking for housing opportunities that can accommodate an aging population that, that can't be accommodated in more rural environments in the, in the surrounding area. In terms of the long-term housing outlook, again, we've projected about 10,400 units in the permanent category over the next 30 years. When we add students, that's another 3,300 units that are being added at a rate of about 2% a year. In total, that's about 13,700 units. The last point I wanted to make is that, um, sorry, I have two, one more slide. The annual growth rate across, as I mentioned, across the, the, the city is expected to slow over the long term, and that deceleration in housing is again, as a result of the slowing population forecast. So the last point I, I wanted to make on housing is two issues on, on rental, as I mentioned. The city has a very low rental rate currently at about 0.6%, where recommending an additional 650 units be added to the housing stock in the near term to get that housing rental vacancy rate up to a more healthy rate of about 3%, more comparable to the provincial average. And lastly, the population of the city of Kingston is, is diversifying, and as a result of that diversifying of population, we'd also expect the housing stock to continue to diversify as well to accommodate the broader range of demographics, socioeconomic groups within the city of Kingston. So that will require a broader range of, of housing forms by, by type, as well as affordability and location. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Strumpf.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I was anticipating this report because for some reason, we've had a lack of, of data on student population, and it makes it very difficult for our decision-making. But just looking at, at your presentation, and I don't know if we need to go back to some of the slides, but, so you said 0.7% projected annual growth, was that for the 30-year period?
That's the, yeah, that's the total population.
And then 2% in the student population sector?
Uh, it's, that, that was housing.
That's housing?
Housing's actually growing a little bit quicker.
So that's student housing. So do you have the numbers for the student population growth, like the?
The, the student population grows around 1.2%. The enrollment levels are about 1.2%.
Do you have numbers for what percentage of the 0.7% growth? What slice of that is student population growth?
Yeah, so about 36% of the population over that 30-year period is from students, and about 64% is permanent.
Okay. And out of the permanent 64%, do you know what percentage is 65 and over?
Uh, yes. If I look at the report, there is a summary of this. Give me one minute. So it's on page 5-6 of the report. So in 2016, about 19% of the population was 65 years and older, and by 2046, that's expected to increase to 25%.
35.
So and there's, the actual absolute values are summarized in the back in the appendix.
So 25% of the total population will be 65 and over by 2046?
By 46, yes. And it's, what's really important, though, to take away from that, though, is it's the 75-plus age group that's really growing. So the baby boom population, as it ages, the bulk of those boomers are going to be in the 75-plus category. So the 64 to 7, 65 to 74 age group is actually shrinking a little bit, it's shrinking by a percent, but the 75-plus age group is growing from 9% in 2016 to 16% in 2046.
Okay, so that, so thank you for that. So basically, the, the, the large, the higher growth, the growth that, or what's driving even the modest number growth that you're quoting is really the student population and the senior population, essentially. You could, you could sum up the most of the growth is coming from those two sectors?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay. Now, the other clarification is on the vacancy rate, so 0.6%, that's the multi-residential vacancy rate, correct?
It's the, it's the, it's the, it's the overall vacancy rate the CMHC reports for all housing within, within the city.
So it's, so it's not broken down by housing type?
Pardon me?
It's not broken down by housing type?
I don't believe it is, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other, oh, yes, Counselor Hutchinson? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Agnew.
Thank you. Just wanted to provide a clarification. So the, the 0.6% vacancy rate that's stated by CMHC, that's for units, four units and more. There's a secondary market that's evaluated separately than that.
Ask another question, then. Maybe to Ms. Agnew. So do we have the numbers for the vacancy rates of the single-family and to, to the duplex, those other groups?
Thank you, and through you. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's definitely less than 3%. I think it's around 1.2%, but we can get those information, that information provided to you.
Yes, I just, I know that, I, it was my understanding that 0.6% that we often use is the, the multi-residential rate. However, that is the housing form that suits the two growing populations, the students and seniors and the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. When we started this whole process, we had the first public meeting and you were doing work on it. It looked like the lower projection was going to be the most likely projection that would come forward. In other words, the annual increase would be not 0.7 as is up here, but 0.5. And in fact, I think you said that at one of the meetings, that that's the initial finding. So I'm just wondering what thought process went through that changed that projection?
Well, to be, to be clear, through you, Mr. Mayor, there was never a, a fundamental shift in the, in the, in the scenarios of growth. We presented the, the draft findings in December, and you were, yeah, I recall you were there, Mr. Counselor. We went back and we took a look at the, the data. We made some minor adjustments to the fertility rate. We were fairly, fairly, fairly conservative on the overall fertility rate, and that modest increase we made in the fertility rates had a bit of a downward impact on migration, but there really was no significant change in the overall rate of forecast growth under the, the medium or the base scenario. We did recognize that, as I mentioned, that a significant amount of net migration is required, a relatively comparable amount of net migration, I would add, relative to what you've had over the last 30 years. And then since that time, we've also looked at the post-census estimates for 2016. I have a slide here, I can provide them, those estimates to you. They are coming out quite a bit higher than our 2018 estimates here. So in 2018, the post-census estimates for StatsCan are at 173,450. That includes an undercount, so it's a portion of the population that's missed during enumeration. Our population in 2018 is 168,200. This number's still preliminary. My, my initial observation is that I think, I believe the undercount's a little bit overstated in this forecast, but it is clearly showing us that the, the short-term trend that StatsCan is seeing for Kingston is actually more aggressive than our forecast. So based on all that information, I don't feel that, I, I've never felt that the, the lowest scenario is necessarily the most likely, but I've, we acknowledge that efforts need to be made to ensure that you are doing your part to attract labor and you're attracting ultimately migration to the city.
Um, I think you made reference at that time, it just, it's not up there, but when you're doing the projections of population, you're doing it for the city and for the CMA. And most of the growth appears to be in the CMA. So, yeah, I may be wrong about this, but it seems to me that it was discussed at one point, the, the issue, you even had a term for it, of people live outside the city and therefore don't pay taxes even though they work in the city. They don't, and do you, do you remember that part of it? And it's, I think it was identified to some kind of gap, and it is an issue, right? I mean, it's even in our budget documents to look at that. So I'm just wondering if you had any comment on that?
Uh, so just to clarify if I can, so is the question, you're, you're wondering about the, the relative relationship between growth in the CMA and the city and what that growth is and the impacts? Is that generally the question?
Yeah. Well, there's a tax impact. If they work here, they re, they take recreation here, they do things here, but they don't pay taxes here. This is always a problem. Lots of cities have this problem. And I'm just wondering relatively how that's affecting Kingston? If you had any notions from the statistics, if that's going to grow and what effect it could have?
Uh, so again, through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any, I'm not able to speak to the impacts of that because the study scope of this work was not looking at the, the impacts of growth outside of the CMA on municipal services or infrastructure within the city. I can tell you that the CMA overall is growing at a slightly slower rate of 0.4% relative to 0.5% for the, the, the permanent or the census population as we define it. The city makes up a very large percentage of that CMA population, about 87% of the growth is attributed to the city's growth. So obviously, it has a very high influence on the overall rate of growth in the CMA, but the city's growth is actually still slightly higher than that growth from the, the surrounding area in the CMA. So just to put that into context, it's not, there's not a situation where you're seeing a, a significant divergence in the rate of growth. There may be other issues in terms of form of housing or density, but the rates are relatively comparable.
Thank you. One last thing. You said we had to build immediately 645 units, and could you just clarify the other statement that was up there? I didn't quite catch it. That was on top of the 8,700. There it is. An additional 645 units would be added to the city's rental housing stock in the near term. What's the definition of near term? And the figures, in addition to 8,500 rental housing units anticipate, oh, okay, over 30 years. So that answers half my question. What's the near term?
So the near term we've identified is, we haven't provided a specific definition, but we've identified that the 645 units are added to the first five years of the forecast period from 2016 to 21. We're already in 2019, so that leaves us two years essentially to get to like a mid, a mid-2021 period, which would align with the census. I think more work needs to be done to, you know, determine the, the timing and the details of that, but this is just a relatively high-level assessment that says your vacancy rates are very low, and in order to get to a healthier rate, you, you should be looking at providing more, more rental housing.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will move on. Are there any petitions to present? Counselor Chappell?
Thank you, your worship. There's been a petition with regards to a radio communication tower proposed by Rogers Communications on Sidham Road by the Enable Association. I have 79 signatures on this document from the residents of Eunice Drive, Sidham Drive, Arnold Street, and Brass Drive, who are opposed to the constructions of the proposed Rogers Cell Tower in their neighborhood. It is closed for public consultation through the, the CRINS process now, and there's a motion later on tonight in our package to look to see counsel. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no other petitions, we have a motion of congratulations moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the sincere appreciation of Kingston City Council be extended to the volunteers, individuals, businesses, institutions, and community partners who participated in this year's pitch in Kingston. Approximately 9,531 people registered and many more participated. Thank you for helping make our city more beautiful and vibrant. Motions of condolences. First, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hill, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Captain Dan Coffey, firefighter Joel Coffey, and the friends and family of Brian Stephen Coffey, who passed away April 24th, 2019 at the age of 75. Brian was a retired firefighter. We thank him for his service and dedication to the community. He will be greatly missed by so many. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hill, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Aaron North, acting captain, and Don Newton, firefighter, on the recent passing of Lyle North. Lyle was father to Aaron and father-in-law to Don. Our thoughts are with Aaron, Don, and their families during this difficult time. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hill, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Jeff Olnick, captain on the passing of his mother, Francis Olnick, on May 1st, 2019. Our thoughts are with Jeff and his family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so we will now move on to reports. First, we have report number 34 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Chappell, that the report number 34 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are eight clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Counselor Doherty? First clause. Counselor Holland?
Number five, please.
Number five. Counselor Kylie?
Number seven.
So first, we will vote on the balance of the clauses. Clause two is a word-of-contract 2019 model truck with a construction work body. Clause three, approval of initial study grant application for the former prison for women property located at 40 Sir Johnny McDonald Boulevard. Clause four, patio application PJ Murphy's. Clause six, tourism Kingston new lease agreement. Clause eight, appointment of deputy treasurers. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause one, proposed renaming of a private road known as West Campus Lane to Hargreaves Way. Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for city staff. I received a request from the Hargrave, Hargrave family to ask whether some of the, the buildings on West Campus could indeed be, be given the municipal address of Hargreaves Way, and I wonder if, if city staff could respond to that?
Ms. Agnew. Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So we are working with Queen's University to look at potentially assigning some civic addresses along the newly-named Lane Way. There are not currently any buildings or properties that have a civic address off of the renamed Lane Way, but we're working with Queen's to see if they would be supportive of that.
Okay, so we will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Clause five, declare surplus and transfer lands 31 Weller Avenue. Counselor Holland?
Thanks very much, your worship. I mostly wanted to just thank staff for the work involved in this initiative on behalf of residents in the area, particularly the members of the parish council at St. Matthew's Night Church, who are, have been working really hard to find a good way to make that church organization sustainable, and this is one of those moves in, in the direction of, that's required for them to be able to plan for their future. So it's really important work that has taken place, and much appreciated that it's been remedied and all of, that, that the due diligence that, that was required to make all that, all of the changes has taken place. So thanks for all the hours put into it.
Thank you. We will call the vote on clause five. We will call the vote on clause five. And that carries. Clause seven, Kingston Economic Development Corporation contracts beyond terms of service level agreement. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, I just had a question for staff about policies around leasing buildings versus potentially buying them. On page 74, it talks about the term of the lease being for $69,000. And I'm wondering if there becomes a point where it would make more sense to invest in a permanent building for the organization.
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor, so I obviously can't speak on behalf of the Economic Development Board. Those decisions in terms of where the lease will take place and how the board wishes to move forward are usually taken place directly at the organizational level. The reason, the only reason why this is in front of counsel tonight is because the term of the lease will exceed the term essentially of the agreement that we currently have. Typically, this would not come to counsel for approval because the board has the authority usually to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause seven. And that carries. Okay. Moving on to report number 35 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 35 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay. So there are three clauses. The first is council meeting start time. Counselor Stroud?
I was a little surprised to see this in the agenda. I know that 7:30 start time has been in place for all recent memory for me. I'm not sure if it ever was sooner than that in the past, but as long as I've been paying attention. And if it was moved, it would create many more conflicts for me with my other employment, which ends at 7:00. I'm already rushing to get here for 7:30. So I would suggest that if part of the reason to move it forward is to allow for more time for debate, I would suggest that we maybe show a little more self-restraint on what we put forward as new motions because that typically is what happens at the end of our agenda. And I will be voting against changing the start time. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else wishes to speak? Counselor Chappell?
I'm just looking at the types of topics that we bring up into council. Many of it falls without the domain of our municipal mandate, but in the provincial and the federal jurisdiction. And if we move the time of council earlier, I am concerned that all we will do is extend the time even later. So I believe that by starting sooner is not productive because we'll end up extending the length of the meetings. So I'm going to be voting against this.
Thank you. Counselor Holland? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw your hand first, so.
Oh, go for it. This is quick. It's mostly a question. I noted in the report that there's reference to, like I understand the rationale that's being put forward, but thinking about the other demands on staff, for example, is a part of it I think that we need maybe to know a little bit more about. So like, what are we dealing with at this point in time when it comes to costs or overtime associated with having staff be at meetings after a full day of work?
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor, so any non-unionized staff that are usually at meetings or not, do not receive overtime for their time at meetings after a regular full day of work. So that's not the driving force behind this recommendation. It's more around public engagement. And sometimes when our meetings last until 11:00 or past 11:00, it can be very difficult for people to attend that long or watch from home until that late into the night.
Thanks. I guess I'll just say then that I am supportive of this motion and do have faith that it would be shortening the meeting or that the meetings would end earlier, that the discussion and debate wouldn't carry on longer with an earlier start time. I'm not sure what to do with Counselor Stroud's conflict, but I think one of the other important parts of the rationale is, has to do with the agenda perhaps and the fact that we're dealing sometimes with really complicated issues really late in the evening and a desire for council to finish the agenda in that one meeting seems like perhaps we're not always at our best at that point in the day. I just know that I personally am more of an early-to-bed kind of person. But yeah, I do hope that we can resolve any of the issues with conflicts, et cetera.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchison?
I have to say, I see this motion, I view with some skepticism. First of all, I've been here at 4:30 for closed sessions. It's not an enticement to me to tell me I can come back for another meeting. I think especially if you're working, even if you're not at 7:00, but my official time was usually 5:30, it's a push. And it's not unusual for council to be here, and the public doesn't really know this very well, an hour, even two hours ahead of the start time. So now we're back into the late afternoon, and I can't see how that makes life easier for those who own a business or are going to work. And they want, especially those with kids, who want to get home, see those kids, and then go out for their work. It might work better for some staff members, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. For me, I just write off the evening, okay? And when I come, I want to be done. If it's 12:00, I don't care because I'm not coming back. That's what I most want, not come back. And so, you know, and so I don't know where this came from. It never came to council to see if we wanted to do it, but you know, it's a report. And so, and what was said by another counselor, it's not clear what the benefits are. And so my first, so, and I also believe in Parkinson's Law, that is, work will expand the fill of time. It's a very old maxim taken out of the military, mostly, I think. And so I'm afraid I'm going to be turning up for an hour and I've noticed this at council. People say, oh, look, short agenda. Let's discuss every dang thing here. It doesn't seem to work. So I don't see any real benefits here. Want to bring it back with more benefits, then fine, maybe I'd vote for it, but not as it is now. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair? Thank you. So I would caution council making a decision about what's best for us. We are public servants. We serve our community. I think we should give some thought as to what is best for our community. And I think that the comment that was made earlier by staff was a really interesting one. It was the comment that there are often some very important issues that we deal with that we do not get to until 10:00 or 11:00 at night because we start so late. It's currently 9:16. We're probably not going to get to new motion number three until fairly late. There's already a number of people that probably were here, wanted to observe the debate, and they've had to leave because it's just gotten too late. So I think that this is something we should think carefully about. I think that bringing council in line with other committee meetings that start at 6:00 or 6:30, I don't think is unreasonable. There was a comment made about closed session, and my view is that we're not going to start earlier. We may just have shorter closed-session meetings more often. There was a comment, if we do want to talk about, you know, those with young families, so I would be counted as one of those. I'll tell you what's most difficult for me is usually having a meeting that goes till midnight one day and then back in the office at 7:30 a.m. the next day, and then usually the condition that I'm in by the following day. So my personal feeling is that I think that an earlier meeting probably would work. But again, I don't think that that's the basis that we should make this decision on. So I would just encourage council to be open-minded and to think, let's make a decision based on what we think is best for the community, whatever decision you think that is, let's move with that. Thank you very much.
I return to the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Neal, and then Counselor Bowman, Counselor Ostrov.
Thank you. I think you answered in part my first question, which was, I was just curious about the genesis of this motion. Was it, and this isn't meant despairingly at all, I'm just curious, was it the mayor's office? Was it clerk's office? Was it a collaborative recommendation? I'm just curious.
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor. So this was actually staff-driven, and it was a combination of a number of different staff being involved. Counselors, you will know obviously that most committees, actually, I think the committee that starts the latest is 6:30. And typically where we probably, for the most part, get most public participation would be through committees. We do get a lot, obviously, at planning and a number of other committees. So looking at that and looking at the time often that we get to, especially with motions, starts to usually get pretty late, and we see people leaving throughout the evening that are not seriously staying the entire night because probably they need to get home because they may need to work the next day. So this was an attempt to try to see if we could get an earlier start, so hopefully we can get people more engaged until the end of the meetings.
And I appreciate that rationale. I guess, but I do sympathize with Counselor Stroud. He ran for election looking at a schedule that had been an established schedule for many years and said, yeah, I can do that job. I know from now being a retired teacher, from the many years I was on council as a full-time teacher, it really, really alters what committees you can sit on, what, I mean, there's all kinds of committees I can now sit on as a retire with hours during the day that I wouldn't have been able to sit on before. So that, I think, is a consideration, and it might have been easier if we did this, made this decision later in a term so people could make up their mind. My main concern about this, and I believe, I'm going to listen to all the debate, I believe I'm going to support the motion, but my concern is with the in-camera and the number of people, because this is, I've always called it my part-time, full-time job. The reality is that it technically is a part-time job, and people have to be able to do their council duties around a work schedule. So what are we going to do with the in-camera? I would hope that we move the in-camera section to the end so that we aren't fighting to get quorum with a 4:30 in-camera. What is the intention for the in-camera portions?
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The intention for the closed meeting session would be that it would start earlier than 5:00. So the closed session would go from 5:00 to 6:30, and any information or any items that aren't dealt with that evening would be dealt with prior to the adoption of the bylaws or would be deferred to a future meeting.
Yeah. I think 5:00 would have been a challenge for me when I was working full-time and maybe a challenge to other people that are working full-time. So I would be more comfortable and would be able to support this if the idea was that the in-camera would follow the regular council meeting. Otherwise, I'm not sure I can support this, but I'll wait to hear other speakers.
Thank you. Counselor Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you. So I've heard from a few people on this, and it's going to kind of follow some of Counselor Neal's points. So there are a lot of people out there that work till 5:30, especially residents. And so if we're really looking at what's best for residents to be able to attend, get done work 5:30, rush home, maybe get something to eat, maybe pick up the kids, try to get back here for 6:30 for the start of the meeting, that may or may not be possible. So this schedule's been set for quite a while. I think the community is able to work around this, changing it. You're now maybe going to do the opposite effect, which is you're going to have less people engaging. My other concern is the fact that, I'm sure everybody around this table has encountered this, where the community tends to engage at a very late hour on topics that come up. And oftentimes, you'll be walking into this room at 6:00 or 6:30, and you're getting emails from people that are engaging. Well, if we're already in closed session at 5:00, which I'll say would be a challenge, I think, for a lot of people to make that time, you're not going to see those final pieces of engagement, which may or may not sway your opinion that night. So I think in, to benefit the community, moving it up actually may have the opposite effect, which is you'll actually get less engagement because you're crunching that day down. And as Counselor Hutchison said, he writes off the whole day, but a lot of people in the community that are trying to engage may not have the ability to write off that evening. They're going to try to live their life, get home, do all that, and then still be engaged. As far as the concern about not getting to the new motions, to Counselor Neal's point, I'm not sure moving the closed meetings till after is going to have any benefit because now we're dealing with closed-meeting stuff at a late hour. I'm also not confident that moving the meetings earlier is going to cause them to end any earlier. So without sort of any metrics to prove that that's actually going to be the result, I don't think I can support this. The final point that I'll make is that if we really want to look at how it's, how we got here, it's the talk about dealing with new motions at the end of the night, late at night. I'm not sure if it's possible, but if it is, we could look at amending the procedural bylaw to actually have all the delegations present and then deal with the motions at the start of the meeting, and then we can deal with the routine stuff at the end. So we're fresh going into the kind of meat of the meeting, and then the routine stuff that comes at the end is just normal approvals where we're that much more tired, but it's also something we would have looked at. So it's kind of, the routine orders, I guess, would happen at the end of the meeting, and the new stuff where we're debating and kind of actively listening would be earlier. So in my mind, that would have been a much better way to approach this. I'm just not sold that moving the meetings earlier, I think we're very good at debating around this table, so I don't think moving them earlier is going to make us end any sooner. And if we're still here till 11:30 and this passes, then I will have been proven right. So thank you. I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Ostrov?
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, I would echo Counselor Bohm's comments there, and there might be a way that we can change some of the agenda to get through some of this. I am confused that we haven't had a chance to even discuss this other than here. Since it affects 13 of us, it would have been nice to have been included in the conversation anyways, or get an opinion. But my suggestion is, and I'm prepared to make a half-hour shift instead of an hour, you know, give and take a little bit. That's something that might be palatable for us, and I know I empathize for Counselor Stroud, so, and the adjustments and the expectations we all brought into this term. So I would be open to that. A half hour, make it 7:00 start, and that way we could, you know, a 6:00 close would work.
Are you moving an amendment, Counselor Ostrov?
Sure, I'll move that if I can get a second there.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Bohm. Okay. So the amendment, I'm not going to ask for it in writing, I think it's pretty clear. We're just talking about changing the start time to 7:00 rather than 6:30. Is there anybody else? So anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment, which has to be why 7:00 is better than 6:30? Counselor Stroud?
I appreciate the effort to try to make it, some of us with other work commitments make it work. 7:00 doesn't, 7:30 is already pushing it for me, so 7:00 doesn't help. Regrettably, I'll have to vote against the amendment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chappell?
Just to reiterate, if this council focused on municipal issues only, I'm sure we could have shorter times with our meetings. And so I don't think that I'll be supporting this amendment either.
Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, but I was going to suggest the same move to 7:00, like Counselor Ostrov.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Take the chair, and I recognize you.
I think Counselor Osterhoff's amendment is a great one. It seems to be a compromise between the two. I'm thankful that he put it forward. between the two. I'm thankful that he put it forward. Keep in mind that we can always try it and then change our minds if it doesn't work. So it's not set in stone. Anyways, so with that, I'm happy to support the motion to amend. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. To the amendment, Councilor Neal.
Just quickly, then, we wouldn't consider needing a two-thirds reconsideration if in five months' time we say this isn't working?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, you would require reconsideration at that point.
For the first year. Councilor Senek?
Thank you. Through you, a question to staff. Does that mean that the in-camera would start at 5:30 as the earliest, or would it still be 5 o'clock?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what I was hearing from Councilor Ostraw is he wouldn't like to see the closed session start before 6 o'clock. But we can work with council to come up with a suitable time for the closed session.
Councilor Hutchison, to the amendment.
Well, the amendment with the rider that I just heard right now, which is the 6 o'clock, it's not going to work. Like, if you have in-camera items, and staff comes with them sometimes, and they need a decision, and so it's got to be done that night. And sometimes it's rushed, and sometimes it doesn't work out very well, but there it is. I just can't, you can't limit when the closed session starts, because sometimes you have nothing, and then sometimes you have six items. In my experience, I don't see how, you can't limit it. That can't be part of the reason for voting for 7 o'clock. I admit, it sounds like a good compromise, but not if that's the right...
All I would suggest, and this is a procedural point based on the answer we got from the clerk, is it would suggest to me that there are two separate pieces here, so we can talk about the start time, and then we could have a subsequent discussion about closed session. And I'm only saying that, Councilor Hutchison, only because that was what the clerk had mentioned. Anybody else to the amendment? Very good, we will call the vote, please. This is to amend to 7 o'clock. And that carries by a vote of 8 to 5. On the motion as amended, is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has not already spoken? Very good, we will call the vote on the motion as amended. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 8 to 5. So just a procedural note, staff can correct me that this would start in July. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. Onto clause number two, trap, neuter, vaccinate, return program status report. Councilor Senek?
Thank you, your worship. I fully support the recommendations in this report. I think that there are excellent improvements to the program that we've had for a few years. Opening up the feral cat voucher program to these three new organizations, the Forgotten Pharaohs, For the Love of the Pharaohs, and Kingston Animal Rescue, will let them have direct access to the vouchers to be able to help the cats in need that much quicker. The other part of this report is opening up the feral cat voucher program to include stray cats, and so it's not just wild cats. And this will ensure that no cat out there on the street is left out. So that's a big improvement. All three of these new animal welfare organizations, they try to adopt out the cats. They don't return them out to the street in minus 30-degree weather. They scoop them up, they try to rehome them, and that's just great news. I do believe that when we first brought out the program, that that definition of a feral cat being a wild cat, and it would have to be returned to a caretaker, you know, who would like look after it outside, that was, you know, like too restrictive. And we saw that in the numbers in the report, because for the last three years, the feral cat voucher program has not fully used up the amount of money that was available to it. So now with these three new organizations, right, it's just great news for the cat population. And the last part of the report then talks about working towards a high-volume, low-cost spay-neuter clinic, which is so much needed. And part of the report is going to be opening up a spay-neuter fund, where we can start to receive donations from across the city, right? Kingston loves their pets. We have tons of pets, as we all saw when we were going door-to-door during the election, and now we could start to receive donations going towards the spay-neuter clinic as we go towards that. And that's excellent news, too. It's like the plea to the public to, okay, we're getting very close to doing that. So thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much. We will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Clause three, purchase of Kingston Transit's first electric buses. Councilor Carley?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you to staff, I have a few questions about the life cycle of these buses, particularly on page 95, where it says that we can expect 12 years from them. Is that more or less than the current diesel fleet on average?
Mr. DeCosta?
Through you, your worship, that is identical to the life cycle that our diesel buses are currently planned on, the replacement cycle.
I'm glad to hear it. Two more questions. One is about the charger that we have to buy for them. Do we have to buy individual chargers for each bus, or do we buy one that can charge multiple buses at the same time? Or how does the charger work in relation to the buses themselves?
Through you, your worship, we haven't made a decision yet on the chargers we will purchase. We have options to buy one charger with a larger capacity that could charge more than one bus, or separate chargers that could charge separate buses. What's important to understand, though, is that there is only so much electrical capacity currently available at our site, and that's really the limiting factor here. So there will be a cap on the number of buses that we will be able to charge with our current electrical capacity, regardless of the number of chargers or the type of charger.
Okay, thank you. And final question is about the procurement cycle. If I read the report right, it seems like it will be about 18 months until we get these buses. Is that the normal time that it takes to get a new bus?
Through you, your worship, it's a little longer than normal, and the reason is, is that we have to develop the RFP to procure these electric buses. With our diesel bus fleet, we're part of a consortium that buys through MetroLinks. So for diesel buses presently, we just pick up the phone, essentially, and purchase a bus. Here, we need to develop our own RFP, issue it, evaluate it. So that's adding the extra time. But we do expect, once we award the contract, that the delivery from signing of the contract to being here in Kingston will be about 12 months.
Thank you. Councilor Neal?
Thank you. I understand that EVs and hybrids usually have a longer lifespan than the gas-powered carbon engines. Is that an expectation that we can make, or are you kind of erring on the side of caution to say it's the same number of years?
Through you, your worship, there is not a lot of experience yet in Canada and North America with electric buses. So I think at this point, we are being cautious. We are mirroring the replacement cycle on this bus as we would our diesel buses, just because we don't know yet how it's going to play out. So we're modeling this in the same way on a 12-year replacement cycle, for that reason.
That's fair enough. Makes sense. I'm curious about, we have a number of transit hubs in the city. Would it be logical to seek out an opportunity to put in, say, a double charger at some of those locations in order to keep the fleet kind of rolling? Is that a possibility?
Through you, your worship, there are essentially two types of electric buses presently available in the marketplace. There's a plug-in depot-based charger, which is what we're proposing here. There are also opportunity chargers, which I think is what you're referencing, where the charging would take place on the street, where you would install infrastructure at bus stops, at transfer points to do that. Both are possibilities. I think what you will see happen, and what you're seeing happen in other cities as they're starting to model their electric bus fleet, is you end up with a mix, depending on the type of route and the demands you have and how far it needs to go. So, and that's likely where we will end up. So some of our routes are such that you could charge it overnight, and you don't need to charge during the day. Other routes may require charging during the day. What we're proposing here, I think, is what I would call the simpler solution, because we're not needing to build any infrastructure on the street. The only charging will take place at the transit facility, which allows us to put electric buses into service and try them, and use them, without having to worry about the added complexity at this point of adding on-street charging.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I want to thank you for something I've been hattering about for a number of years.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. I also have a question for staff, but I'll just preface by saying that I'm looking forward to the days when the buses that zoom by my home are no longer diesel, because I think a lot of people are, it'll help with our transit ridership growth, actually, the difference in noise pollution with the electric. So I'm excited about that aspect. Of course, the lack of diesel emissions is the primary reason. My question is related to one of your answers about MetroLinks and the way we procure diesel buses. So if this presumably is happening in other municipalities are considering an electric fleet, so have you, how far have you got on that? Like, will we be able to procure the way that we do with our diesel buses through MetroLinks or by teaming up with other municipalities?
Through you, your worship, I have posed that question to MetroLinks joint procurement. At this time, they are not moving ahead to do a joint procurement with other municipalities. However, they do expect to do that in the future, and I think as you see more of the municipalities that are part of that consortium moving in this direction, they will be compelled to move in that direction as well. So they're not, we're not there yet, but certainly, that's going to be happening. There's no question about that.
Yeah, I think I agree. I think that the real, just like with transit, that you see the huge increase in growth when transit gets so good that it's actually more convenient, cheaper, and faster than any other mode of transportation. That's when it takes off like crazy. Same thing with electric buses. When they get cheaper, more reliable than any of their competitors, they will flood the market, and that's probably when MetroLinks will be doing it. I think it'll happen, it'll just happen one day, and I'm glad that we'll have already had some experience with running them, because it is a different operation.
And I may just add, your worship, yes, and MetroLinks is looking to Kingston because of the municipalities that are participating with MetroLinks. We are going to lead all of the municipalities in moving in this direction. So MetroLinks and the other municipalities will certainly be looking to Kingston's experience in terms of our procurement process.
Councilor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I kind of struggling with some competing priorities in this one, because I just want to understand the numbers a little bit better. So what's the cost of a normal diesel bus right now, let's say?
A normal diesel bus, depending on the features and the specifications, is between $600,000 and $650,000.
Okay. And so right now, if I understand the report properly, for two electric buses, you're at about $2.7 million, let's say. $1.7 million is covered by grants. So really, we're getting two electric buses for a cost of, let's say, the Kingston taxpayer, $500,000 each, kind of with this purchase. Is that pretty accurate? Because it's coming from the Capital Reserve Fund?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so in the future, though, I guess I'm concerned with this purchase, I'm fine, because it seems like we're actually able to get a good deal. But in the future, will there be other grant money that we can apply for? Or do you foresee, I understand with electric vehicles, a lot of the cost is usually upfront. You typically save on the maintenance and the wear and tear and everything. But do you see other opportunities to apply for grant funding to reduce that cost? Because if not, we're going from a $600,000 diesel bus to a $1.35 million electric bus. Do you see those costs being able to be deferred to kind of bring that back into line, so that they'd almost be like-for-like cost-wise in the future?
Sure. Through you, your worship, I'll make two comments. One is, it's really unknown what grant opportunities are going to be available to municipalities in Ontario across the country with respect to future non-diesel, either electric, natural gas, other technologies. It's really unknown. What I would say is, one of the buses that we're recommending this evening will be partially funded by the ISIP funding. And you'll recall, we talked about that a little bit last night at the strategic session. That funding and that allocation will be available to us if we so choose to apply to future electric buses. So that's kind of one component of this. And, sorry, the second point I was going to make was, oh, second point was this. Depending on the modeling that is currently out there, so some municipalities have done modeling that suggests that over the life of the vehicle, the 12-year life cycle, your total costs end up somewhere between break-even versus a diesel bus, or slightly preferred to a diesel bus when you consider the capital cost and the operating cost. But they're just models. And like I said, sort of previously, there's not a lot of experience yet with the full operating life cycle of an electric bus in Canada, given our unique circumstances with winter climate, different electrical markets compared to other jurisdictions around the world. So what's clear, I think, in any of the modeling is the operating costs are going to be lower over the life of the vehicle. What's going to matter as we move into the future is whether the capital costs of those buses start to come down and start to really favor the bottom line over the full life cycle.
Okay, so it's a little bit of a cautious approach there to see how this plays out. And my next one would be...
Sorry, just one second. Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor. So just maybe to, Mr. DeCosta mentioned last night's conversation. So when we presented to council last night, proposed a furor of $57 million, and we indicated to council that we would need about $36.8 million to meet the council priorities, it did take into consideration the incremental costs that will be required for electric vehicles. So we have already accounted for those incremental costs, and that was part of the conversation and part of what was presented to council last night.
Which are, those are best guess costs, though, at this point, because nobody's done this before yet for the 12-year life cycle. Is that correct?
What was presented to council last night were the, I think what CEO Hurdle's referring to are the capital costs, and those are fairly well-known. So what we presented to council in the strategy plan was a procurement over the life of council, the number of vehicles on the life of council. And the capital costs are well-known, you know, they're $1.2 million per bus, and that, those costs have been included in what was presented to council.
Okay, just one quick question then on something Councilor Stroud actually said, because he mentioned not hearing that the diesel buses go by anymore. But with our kind of idea of having safe roads and everything, are these buses perfectly quiet, or do they have some type of noise on them, so people would actually be aware that they're coming? Like, what safety feature would they have? Because I just don't want to cross the road and get hit by an electric bus, because it's perfectly quiet. So just, it's ironic, but it's actually a serious question.
Through you, your worship. No, it's a very fair question. It is something that has already come up in other municipalities, where they're running electric buses. I've had the pleasure of riding on two electric buses, and they are whisper-quiet, very, very quiet. And the manufacturers are now, I don't know if it's part of the specification yet, but they certainly are giving consideration to what kind of devices, audio devices you may put on a vehicle to provide warning to pedestrians and other vehicles that it is coming. It is very quiet. Members of council may not know, but we actually did have an electric bus in the city about 18 or 24 months ago for a short demonstration, and staff had an opportunity to ride the bus. And it is whisper-quiet.
Maybe we can play some local music on those speakers.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councilor Chappell?
Of the funding that's available with regards to the breakdown of the funding, is there a risk of losing some of this funding by June 1st or something, I read, and that with the grant? Can you just clarify the funding aspect?
Mr. DeCosta?
Through you, your worship, yes. So there's three components to the funding: a grant from FCM, the ISIP allocation, and then the municipal component. The FCM grant, the city must... The FCM grant, the city must give indication to FCM whether we want to access that grant funding or not by June 1st. If we opt not to, then we will not have access to that funding.
And the ICIP portion, that's the gas tax portion that comes to the city, is it not?
Through your worship, actually, no, this is a different funding source. So the ICIP, ICIP funding is the federal and provincial grant, public transit stream funding allocation that's available to the city of Kingston that we must spend by March 2027. So this is an allocation that's available to us, separate from provincial gas tax.
That funding for the ICIP, is it designated that it must be an electric bus or could it be another form of public transit?
Through your worship, it broadly can be used for anything that improves public transit and active transportation that supports public transit.
So it could be used to help bring buses to Westbrook, then, rather than purchasing an electric bus?
The ICIP funding is for capital purchases and is not intended to support operating operations. So yes, it can be used to, it could be used to purchase a bus or other amenities, but it doesn't support the operating dollars required to operate a bus.
Okay. My final question is in reference to the fact that changing a fleet for two buses will require new building, new infrastructure, new public training, new public marketing and communication, I'm not sure really what for, data analysis on repairs. You're duplicating a fleet when we still do not have an entire transit system for all of the residents of the city of Kingston. And I do understand that we have a electrification in our strategic plan, but it doesn't necessarily need to be the buses at this time. But we also have the lens through which we're supposed to be looking at projects from a rural lens or consider rural lens. And we have many areas that are rural within our community that do not benefit from public transit. So I will not be supporting this motion. I do not think it's a wise waste. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Well, that was the gauntlet being thrown down. The, let me just point out that this is about what? What kind of bus we're buying? It's not about where it goes. That's another debate for another time. So I'm, I'm just wondering, this is from the, from the report and it says, and then I think the answer about the buses and whether they're accounted for in the budget last night was one question I had and you answered that. The answer is yes. And so are we applying for other ICIP programs? And can you let us know what they are briefly, roughly, where the areas would be?
Sure. Through you, through you, your worship, yes, our intention is to apply for other ICIP projects. Staff is working presently to identify what those projects will be. The ICIP program is going to have multiple intakes, the first one being here at the end of May. And then we expect intakes throughout the seven-year allocation process. What I will say is council in the strategic plan has given us some direction already with respect to the types of projects that we would consider applying for ICIP funding. One is namely being the transit way that's identified in the plan, but there are others.
Just so I understand this entirely, it says here, city of Kingston's alloc- ICIP allocation is, and if you add it up, it's about $78 million. When I add those things up, that's a legitimate thing to do?
That's correct. So over the next seven-year period, we'll have access. This is Kingston's allocation. It's not competitive, competitively based. This is our allocation. 42.8 million from the federal government, 35.7 from the provincial government, and the municipality must make up the difference 27%.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to be clear.
Counselor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I guess I heard most of the questions I was going to ask as well. And I struggle with it as well, similar to Counselor Chappell. The 1,067 from Transit Capital Reserve Fund, is that taxpayer money or is that funds raised through transit fees?
Your worship, I defer that to Ms. Kennedy.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through your worship. It's mainly through transit fees. There would be a small portion coming in through tax, but it's mainly transit fees.
Okay. Thank you. Has solar energy been considered in your, in your discoveries and seeing the buses? Like the roof, it's a big rooftop. Are they thinking about keeping some trickle charging happening that way? I understand as an electrician and a career electrician that this is obviously the power required to charge these is, you know, if a stove is required for your car to stove power, that's how much power you need. I can only imagine how much power is going to be required for the bank of batteries. It's substantial. So is there solar options available?
Through your worship, I'm not aware of anything currently available in the marketplace that would rely on solar power as a trickle charge to continue operation. Not aware of that, but certainly the technology is changing. There's innovation happening all of the time. And I would, I would concur. The amount of energy required to run an entire transit fleet is quite large. At this point, we've done a very preliminary estimate based upon the number of kilometers we currently travel each day. The amount of energy required is going to be about 20 megawatts of power daily. And so that's why the report recommends to council that we come back with a budget item about really getting a handle and an understanding of how we will best manage the energy required as we continue to electrify the fleet.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on that that I, that's substantial. Not too many people would know how much power that is, but I was questioning whether I would support it. I probably will support it because we need the buses and this is going to be a great trial run, but we certainly need a lot of development of technology for me to continue to support this.
Thank you. Okay, we will call the vote on clause three, please. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Okay, on to report number 36 from Planning Committee.
It's my pleasure to submit report number 36 from the Planning Committee duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Kylie, that report number 36 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Okay, so we will vote on them as a whole. Number one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 15 Grenadier Drive. Number two is the population housing and employment forecast study. Yes, Counselor Hutchinson, do you do want them separated? So we will separate number two. So number one, we'll do the vote on number one and number three. Number one is approval and application for zoning bylaw amendment 15 Grenadier Drive. Number three, additional opportunities for public participation in the planning approvals process. Oh, I'm sorry, it's number three that you want separated? Okay. So you'll first call the vote on clause one and clause two. And that carries. Now to clause three, additional opportunities for public participation in the planning approvals process. Counselor Hutchinson.
I want to bring forward three amendments which were arrived at at planning and with planning staff's support, the, and senior staff as well. So this, they're going to put it up there. And there it is. It's a bit, it's not that complicated, really, although it looks like it there. So what's happening in the first clause is that, the first clause you see in your agenda is being amended to add the words after case-by-case basis. The words are put in or by a member of council in consultation with the Director of Planning, Building and Licensing Services or his or her designate. Do you want me to do the second one as well?
So I think it's, so this is, this is one motion to amend, but there's a lot here. So that's, that's fine.
Well, the first two are essentially the same and the third one, I'm probably going to hand over to Counselor Ossanik, who's seconded.
Okay. Okay. So let's, so first of all, first question, it's moved by you, who's the seconder?
Counselor Ossanik.
Counselor Ossanik is seconded. Okay. So I'm just going to read it. So there's a motion to amend that clause one of the recommendation regarding additional opportunities for public participation in the planning approvals process be amended by adding the words "or by a member of council in consultation with the Director of Planning, Building and Licensing Services or his or her designate" after the words "case-by-case basis." And the first sentence of the first bullet in Exhibit A of report number PC 19 dash 30 be amended by adding the words "or by a member of council in consultation with the Director of Planning, Building and Licensing Services or his or her designate" after the words "application submission." And that the first sub-bullet under the fifth bullet in Exhibit A of report number PC 19 30 be amended by adding the words "this is to be accompanied by renderings showing the massing of the proposed development in comparison to the as-of-right building envelope, both drawn to the same scale and perspective after the words requested relief." Okay, so I'm just going to pause there. So you've spoken to the first two paragraphs, Counselor Hutchinson?
I'm going to.
But you're going to let Counselor Ossanik speak to the third. So before I hand the floor over to Counselor Ossanik, is there anything else you wish to say to this motion to amend?
Just briefly. This is about opening up the planning process to some degree to allow for, let's see how to put this, that, that the, the idea is that there will be an open house, which staff have put forward at a certain point in the planning process to allow the planning, an application to be discussed or explained to the public by the applicant. And it's felt that that will help the public understand the application better and also allow for input from the public with the developer, their representatives. And so the, what you see, part of three came from staff and during consultation during the planning committee meeting, it was, it was recommended to add the part where a member of council could, in consultation with the Director of Planning, could request an open house. Now, the way it's envisioned that works is the same way in which we allow for a bump up. But now we allow at a certain point in the planning process to be bumped up to planning when it wouldn't have normally gone there. And so that is done when a councillor in a particular district requests it and brings it to council and it's okay. So this does the same thing without all the bureaucracy. And that's all this does. It does it twice and it's a lot of words, but that's essentially all it does. And it's not expected to happen very often, but it allows for that possibility.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ossanik, why, if you would like to take the floor and if you wanted to speak to the third clause?
Sure. Thank you. So with the third clause, what's that saying? Is when they have the open house, it would be helpful to have a diagram of what the new building will look like with the amendment versus what the new building could go up today with the zoning that it would have. So for instance, if a high-rise was being proposed for the downtown, it would be a picture of the high-rise that could be allowed to be up to six stories, seven stories, whatever, you know, that bylaw limit is today. And then also show, but what they're asking for is 15 stories, so what that picture would actually look like so that the public can understand, oh, well, they could actually build that, you know, at nine stories, whatever it is today, but they're asking for that much more. It would just provide clarification in the public so that they're not thinking that the public or council is voting down an entire building. It's like, no, they could already, you know, build something at six or seven stories, but they want to also go that much higher. So that's what that's trying to show, just for these complex applications going to the open house.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the amendment only? Counselor Neal?
Thank you. Both the mover and the seconder of this amendment are on Planning Committee with me and, and we had a fairly fulsome debate about this at the time. And I appreciate that the mover suggested that this should be used sparingly because the reality is we have put an awful lot of work on the planning department's inbox. And so, but I think it's a necessary addition because like a bump up of site plan, it allows council or councillor the ability. It isn't purely and totally a kind of delegated authority to staff. It gives us as the representatives for the district, an opportunity to, to suggest that a public meeting would be, would be in order. Now, we could do it, and I'm quite comfortable voting in favor of this as it is before us. The other thing that came up in the discussion was it could be like a bump up of site plan where there's a mover and a seconder and it goes to council. But again, that delays the process by at least a couple of weeks. So I'm quite happy with the wording of this and if we need to tweak it in the future because the sense is it's being used too frequently or too frivolously, then I'll support that if it comes back to us as well. But I'm comfortable at, at looking at this and test driving this, this policy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the amendment? Counselor Ostroff?
I'm confused by it, really. I do understand, I just, I can see situations where it might be necessary and having my first term on planning, but I would like to know from the Director of Planning, what, what does this look like to her and to the planning department? Is there some feedback on this?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you. And through you, so staff did assist with the development of this motion and as has already been discussed, this is a reflection of the discussion that happened in and around this particular item at Planning Committee. So really what this is about is instead of the decision about what types of applications are subject to an open house, that purely being decided within the planning group, it contemplates the ability for the district councillor to talk to staff and to, if there's a significant thing that's happening in your area with respect to an application, maybe on the surface, the application may not look that complex. So we were looking at it initially from complex applications having to go through an open house, more simplistic ones, no open house. But again, on the surface, what appears simplistic from just looking at the planning application, as the district councillor, you may know that, that will be more than simplistic in terms of how the residents may feel or react to it. So therefore, taking that feedback and we can look for the opportunity to have that project go through the open house project or process. I think definitely I heard from councillors that this is something that they didn't want to see happening more than necessary, but they liked the idea of being able to have feedback into that process rather than it be purely a staff decision. I'm not concerned with that. We work very collaboratively, collaboratively with members of council on planning applications anyway. So I'm comfortable with the amendments as they're proposed. It's a little bit wordy, but that's because it has to address the staff report and the appendix, which has all the stipulations for the process. So we needed to make sure that the wording in both were covered off by the amended motion.
Thank you for that. I understand, that's really helpful and I appreciate, especially the part where there's interaction with the councillor in the district and certainly in my, my situation, we have a few of that. That's really, really important and, and would look forward to that level of interaction. And, but what is, what I really want to be clear on, I'm confused as to what is... But what I really want to be clear on, I'm confused as to what is legitimate feedback, because I've been told, through even at L-PAT or wherever discussions, that anything I say as a councillor is just an opinion, and it doesn't really matter. Because the land planning or the professionals know better. And so, are we wasting our time looking at it further? Or what's a realistic approach to a public opinion and actually making a difference?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So as it relates to the public process, the Planning Act generally is very supportive of opportunities for the public to be part of land use, planning decisions, and council's decision-making process. So from that standpoint, the legislation, I think, speaks to this already. When we looked at other municipalities, the majority, the other municipalities we looked at are already doing something of this nature. So for us, this isn't really about whether your opinion is, it's a good application or not. It's really about, do you think that this application is something that could create a lot of interest in your area, and therefore, based on that, we want to provide an additional opportunity for people to get informed on the application, ask questions, and to do so in an environment that's less intimidating than the formalized process of public meetings? Those parts will still continue through, but this is an additional opportunity to engage early, and to have it in a format, and at a time that is different than planning committee, and therefore, having the opportunity for more people to get involved in the planning process, especially when there's complicated applications that are being contemplated.
Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I think this is, although it is quite wordy, it's pretty easy to support, because the gist of it is essentially another opportunity for engagement on issues. And as district councillors, we're probably going to have a better pulse sometimes, so something may come through a normal process, and we'd look at it and go, oh, wow, that's going to generate a lot of consternation or a lot of feedback. But as it's going through the process, it may not trigger some of those things, until all of a sudden, we're all getting it the night before council, and we're dealing with it here. So in my mind, this should actually create some efficiencies. It should allow things to happen at a little bit lower level, and it should allow kind of some more feedback and engagement to sort through those issues before everything gets dumped on us, and we have to make a decision on a pretty big issue at 11 o'clock at night. So I think this is easy to support. So let's hope it passes and bears fruit in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote, then, on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries. Now, on the clause as amended, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 37 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Your worship, I rise to submit this report, moved and seconded for council's consideration from A R C, APC, sorry. Doesn't sound right.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Chappell, that report number 37 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are three clauses. Clause one, tax write-offs pursuant to the municipal act 2001. Clause two, 2019 tax ratios and tax capping parameters. And clause three, first capital place illumination policy review. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 38 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Your worship, I rise to submit report 38 with only one item, moved and seconded for council's consideration, from EITP.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Doherty, that report number 38 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, KEIF mandate. Councillor Carly?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, two questions to staff. It talks about updating the mandate and provides a list of things that will be added. I'm wondering if the mandate is changing to take anything away? If things are being added on to the mandate, is anything being subtracted?
Who can answer? Yes, Mr. Hugovas?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. It's more about clarification, to maximize the effectiveness of the committee, and definitely maximize the value that the members bring, and provide that scope of work that they can be most effective to what council wants from KEIF.
All right. Would that be the same justification for why there's a, quote, gradual reduction in membership size?
Yes, through you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me, but the membership size is, I think, in at least 20. It's, I believe, the largest committee serving council. We're not looking at asking any members to leave at this time, but through attrition to reduce the number to a more manageable size, just so, again, the committee can be most effective in looking at issues for council.
That's fair. Thank you.
Yes, next time, this is councillor Stroud.
Yes, and I think councillor Neil, who sits on KEIF, will be able to shed some light on this as well. We did get a good discussion with Mr. McClatchy from staff at the committee. And so you've identified the two, councillor Kylie, the two main aspects. So focusing the mandate, yes, removing some of the things that are either obsolete, not necessary, that have written into the mandate, or pointless, and also focusing, you know, sharpening it to be more effective in this time, you know, with the climate emergency that we've declared. And then the committee size was also one thing, as mentioned. Essentially, it's sort of like, every once in a while, you have to kind of reassess, recalibrate the effectiveness of committees, and I believe we should be actually thinking of doing this on a few others as well, so I was happy to see that coming to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I do sit on KEIF and have for a number of years. And one of the challenges with having that large a group on a committee with so many voting technical members, of course, is quorum is half of that plus one. And the clerks will nod, I'm sure, when I say this, there were a number of meetings where we weren't able to get quorum. And in our busy lives, I can understand why somebody would look at an agenda and say, oh, there's nothing there for me this meeting. And so you don't go, and the next thing you know, that becomes a working group, where you can't move motions, and the clerk is no longer there, so it's not an official meeting. So that was problematic. The idea of coming up with a yearly report makes the group more accountable to council and the community, so I support that idea as well. And the idea, and we toyed with some other ideas, like perhaps, some of the technical, we should have some technical members who are ex officio, non-voting members, just so that we can hit that target for quorum at every meeting. So I look forward to the new rules, and I look forward to them being better utilized as a committee to achieve our council priorities. And I think it's a great resource that can do that, if we let them do their job and we don't, and we have some meetings that don't become non-meetings because of quorum.
Thank you. Councillor Hutcheson?
I think I got most of my answers here about quorum. I know that's consideration. And hopefully, when they're looking at the mandate, I know a number of people have served on KEIF in the last few years have not been very happy with the way meetings went, what they were able to do, what they were able to work on. So that's not why we put people on committees. I personally think they should be able to come to us, as we did have at one point, directly to council. So, because we thought it was that important. And now, here we've got a climate emergency, and we possibly should be thinking the same way again. So I hope that has to do with running... I know the quorum issue was a pain in the neck for years. So, and the way I guess I see it is, the only technical representatives that have to be there, we count as part of the quorum. So, or something of that sort. So I hope we solve that, and that we can reinvigorate this purpose in this committee. I think, for instance, we're going to look at a number of things. We could be asking them to keep track of us, and to assess what we're doing, from, you know, because I know there are well, very informed people, especially at the university, who have somewhat different views than us, and it's good to know those views. Like, I was a bit surprised by the remarks of Myra Heard about recycling the other day on CBC, and it's good to hear those things, because it stimulates you to think further, right? I'm not saying I agree with all of it, but a lot of it was extremely well-informed. So it's worth tapping those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Report number 39 from the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Yes, it's my pleasure to present the report number 39 from the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee, to be considered by council. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Bohm.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Moved by councillor Hutcheson, seconded by councillor Bohm, that report number 39 from the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are four clauses. Number one, special events policy update. Number two, appointments to the public art working group. Number three, appointments to the local music working group. And number four, the mayor arts awards nominations working group. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 40 from Heritage Kingston.
The Heritage Kingston report is moved by councillor Doherty and seconded by councillor Neil, that report number 40 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of items in this report. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Okay, so then we will vote on the report as a whole.
Waiting for one.
And that carries. Okay, report number 41 from the Rural Advisory Committee.
Thank you. I am pleased to present report number 41, as duly moved and seconded, the Rural Advisory Committee Work Plan.
Thanks.
Moved by councillor Osterhoff, seconded by councillor Bohm, that report number 41 from the Rural Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So it's just the one clause, Rural Advisory Committee Work Plan. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, report number 42 from Planning Committee. Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship.
Do you have the report?
No, I just wanted to make a comment.
I'll come back to you soon.
Jumping ahead.
I do. I'll come back to you.
She's trying to usurp me. It's my pleasure to submit, from the adits, report number 42, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Kylie, that report number 42 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there's just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw, amendment 1020 and 1044 Lancaster Drive. Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to thank planning staff very much for listening to all the comments that were heard at the public meeting about Lancaster School and Mother Teresa School, and for working with the school board to implement all the changes that were then made to the final document. That was excellent. Everyone seems very happy. Thank you.
So we will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Nothing from committee of the whole. We have one information report, quarterly report Tourism Kingston Q1 2019. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, number one, that in accordance with section 3.1.5 of the flag display policy, council approved the raising of the Ukrainian flag in place of the government of Ontario flag for the day of June 15, 2019, in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Lviv-Ukraine Folklore Festival 2019. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Ossanik. And that carries. Number two, that as requested by the Ukrainian-Canadian Club of Kingston, city council proclaimed the days of June 14 to 16, 2019, as Ukrainian-Canadian Club of Kingston's folklore weekend in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Chappell, seconded by councillor Ossanik. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor McLaren. Whereas local public health agencies provide essential programs in Kingston, and offer return on investment at a rate of 1 to 14, saving the province of Ontario approximately 2.8 billion in future acute care costs. Whereas the board of KFLNA Public Health and the medical officer of health are working in collaboration with the association of local public health agencies, and have asked for support from municipal partners in maintaining the current level of service provided by our local public health agency. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Kingston affirm its support for KFLNA Public Health and its dedicated staff, and that the city of Kingston requests the province of Ontario maintain and augment the health protection and prevention mandate of KFLNA, maintain the current 75% provincial, 25% municipal funding formula for KFLNA Public Health, and that the city of Kingston requests the province of Ontario stop the planned reduction of Ontario Public Health units from 35 to 10, and planned reduction of 200 million from public health, and instead initiate consultations with municipalities and public health agencies and the public health system in Ontario. And that this motion be shared with Ian Arthur, MPP Kingston and the Islands, and Randy Hillier, MPP Landarch Frontenac Kingston, and Daryl Cramp, MPP Hastings, Lennox and Addington. Councillor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm going to start off just by addressing the out-of-jurisdiction issue that does come up, and I think has been brought up several times tonight, and I completely understand and appreciate that concern with certain motions. This one does not fall into that category, despite the fact that there are some references to improving health. And I guess, broadly speaking, there are some challenges with the constitution that we have, and when it was designed, in that municipalities today are much different than what they looked like in 1867. But that is for another day. I totally recognize that. I do think, though, that we have to think back just a little bit, the history of public health. Public health was formed based on a recognition that many aspects of health are specific to an environment, to a location, to a region, to a population. It was formed as a way to allow for more local decision-making on issues that directly impact the everyday lives of residents. And also, KFLNA Public Health, as we all know, is already receiving our municipal funding. We're now looking at a situation where there will be changes to that funding, and changes to the governance structure of public health. Most importantly, changes to the regions, changes to the number of people that are served by public health. And we don't know the full impact yet, but we do know that we're moving towards a larger portion of the costs of public health being put... portion of the costs of public health being put at the municipal level. We just last night voted on a tax rate increase for the entire term of council that specifically suggested that there would be potentially a need to reexamine our tax rate going forward based on any pending reduction in funding from the province. So, here we are, clearly in a situation where our, that is completely relevant to our work as municipal councillors. We are about to be faced with cuts in funding, cuts in services that are going to force us to pay more. Now, those discussions are to come. We don't even know what the cuts are yet. But based on the constitution, we do know that the province has the ability to mandate certain things, and they will be telling us what to do. So, the, the, there are a couple of really significant problems. Mostly, I want to focus on the impact, the potential impacts on residents. So, we just recently identified in our strategic planning process, a health and all policies approach as a sort of guiding principle. And I brought that forward, and we didn't discuss it a lot, but I think we did all kind of recognize the fact that this is just a way of being more efficient and more comprehensive when we do our own policy development. For example, we know we want to encourage active transportation in the city, and we also know that KFLNA Public Health wants to see more people running and biking and cycling because, of course, that's better for our longevity and our quality of life. So, our efforts to encourage people to use active transportation are supported by the work of public health. And that's the type of thing that we need to see more of in the city and certainly not less of because it really, really gives a good rationale and sort of, a lot of efficiencies, frankly, in making policies that really have the maximum benefit for residents. So, where are we at? We are currently, as Dr. Moore mentioned, going at a point where the Board of Health will no longer exist in a year's time. Our local Board of Health will be disbanded, and we will be sort of amalgamated into this group of ten within the, within the province. So, one of the bigger challenges, I think, with what we're seeing right now is the fact there was no consultation, a very limited consultation, on issues that have direct impacts on us, on us, on our taxpayers, on our taxpayers, on us as decision-makers, as municipal decision-makers, on our ability to be accountable. And so, we're going to be potentially paying more for less accountability in the future. The budget of KFLNA, it's very, very staff-intensive. We've got a lot of frontline services. Dr. Moore didn't mention the specifics, but we're at about eighty to eighty-five percent of our budget going towards staff, staffing costs.
Thirty seconds.
Those would be cuts to frontline services. And I think there, if you haven't seen the website, all the list of things that public health does, many public health professionals who've been, who've discussed this, as you recently have said, that we are invisible when everything is going well. So, please pay attention to what we need to be doing as a city to support public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. And just really quickly to say what exactly does public health do for us? And it's basically a prevention organization that keeps things from getting worse or getting out of hand. And they're talking about a two-hundred-million-dollar budget cut. Now, scholarly literature that has been accumulated over time, when you look at cutting public health in other jurisdictions, amounts to about fourteen to one, which means that we're going to be spending a lot more. If we're spending two-hundred-million now, if we're going to save two-hundred-million now, we're going to be spending two-point-eight-billion later to take care of people in acute care. But in addition to that, it doesn't count the grief and the agony of diseases that have been exterminated. So, for example, polio, rubella, measles. If we were, we have herd immunity. What this means is that even if a busload of infected measles tourists were to come here and shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants and visit our public spaces, there would not be an outbreak of measles in Kingston. That's under threat with the capacity loss in this cut. In the future, our next generation of children may actually suffer from measles because of these cuts. They also enforce food, food security and food safety. So, diseases or bacteria like salmonella and E. coli are not going to be in our food supply right now because they enforce that, they check that. If we cut their capacity, the chances of getting that go up. But it's also more than that. These are one of the most innovative centers in Ontario for health promotion and health innovation. They developed a program called SHIP, which actually links all the health, primary healthcare providers across a whole range of disciplines to make sure that they have access to the most current information of particular patient needs. So, this is ambulance, personal care workers, emergency room, and their personal physicians. They've also got surveillance. They've linked in with ICUs throughout the entire province to try and monitor for spikes in particular outbreaks because the faster you get to identify an outbreak, the quicker you can respond to this. All of this is at stake if they cut the capacity. Last year, we passed a motion asking the federal government to help, to help fund a Lyme disease network. They identified this, they were the leaders on this, and we got that money. But if they have, they don't have the capacity to do that anymore, that could be wasted. That's what's at stake here, so I hope that you will support this and give it a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Neal.
Thank you. I totally support this motion. I have been on public health for a number of years, and they do tremendously valuable work in the city. And then what's being proposed is going to be a download of the costs, and in a year's time, what is now governed very well by five municipal appointees, three from the city, one from each of the counties, and four provincial appointees will end up, as Dr. Moore pointed out, being decided in Ottawa or elsewhere. And so, what we're going to end up with is truly an example of taxation without representation. The reality is, the province will be demanding more money from us, the decisions will be being made elsewhere, and we may be lucky enough to have one appointee from KFLNA. We have a tremendous public health board and body here in Kingston, Frontenac, Lennox and Addington. We're hosting the Alpha Conference in early June. In fact, I believe the mayor's a keynote speaker at the, at the opening of that. And Dr. Moore is renowned across, across the country. He is leading the Lyme disease initiative, national initiative. He's active with, with, with the opioid crisis and is internationally renowned for that. So, here we have this best practices stellar organization, and it's about to be dismantled. And it's, it's shameful, I think. And so, I think this motion is essential, and I sincerely hope it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bowham.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So, I appreciate my colleagues' comments earlier about, you know, kind of playing with your own sandbox and everything, and also to councillor Neal's point is, in the grand scheme, I think, yeah, there is only one taxpayer, and this really is kind of about downloading that. So, I mean, if it's, if it's not there, then we're going to kind of have to make up the difference, and we're also going to lose a resource. So, I can support this. One of the reasons I can lean towards supporting this, especially seeing as it is a municipal-provincial joint issue, but the other thing is the final "that" clause, where it basically says that this motion be shared with Ian Arthur, MPP Kingston and the Islands, Randy Hillier, MPP Lennox, Frontenac Kingston, and Daryl Cramp, MPP Hastings, Lennox and Addington. That works for me. And the reason is, is because we're now saying, if we approve this collectively as a council, this is kind of our thought on this. We're sending it to the appropriate representative to then take our voice and champion it with their level of government. We're not broadcasting this to everybody in the province and all the different offices. We're not inboxing people at the federal level. We're not just kind of, you know, tweeting to everybody, and because that, that just becomes white noise after a point. So, I think the way this motion's written is appropriate. I think who we're sending it to is appropriate, and I think that is the best way on this one and on other ones going forward, when these pass, to actually gain action and show that here's something Kingston council supported, ideally to benefit the community. Now, please take that to whomever you would go and lobby at your level of government, instead of just saying, send it to everybody in the province and send it to everybody federally. So, those are the reasons why I can support this, and I thank the mover and seconder for bringing it forward and making us aware of this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chappell.
Councillor Bowham, can I have my notes back, please? I was actually going to comment on the presentation that councillor, it's a long night, isn't it? Yeah. Councillor Holland had referred to, and that is the way it is structured, and so councillor Bowham and I had a little sidebar on this. I think it is a very well-written motion, and it's, I do agree that it does affect the community as a greater whole, and even though it's provincial jurisdiction, you do have my support in this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Strout.
Yes, as you know, I often say, caution my colleagues to be careful about advocacy of your work as a council, like writing motions that are advocating to a higher level of government of courses of action and that we don't agree with and so on. Got to be really careful when we do that, and I think, I agree, this is one of the ones where it's totally justified. Especially since it's not just like a provincial thing, it's provincial and municipal, this one. And we have three council members on that governing body. So, and I've sat there myself, so we've heard from the three, councillor Holland, councillor Neal and councillor McLaren, that are currently sitting on that. And I've sat on it in the past, so I'm adding my voice as someone who's sat on that board, seeing the value that it, that it provides. The preventative thing cannot be understated. Like, it's literally, there's, there's science that supports the saying, an ounce of prevention is a pound of cure, that here it's saying it's fourteen to one from some studies. We are already way, I work at the other end. I work in critical care, okay? You know how expensive it is to send someone through the hospital in critical care? Well, you've got to pay my salary to start with. But no, it's, it's, it's really expensive. It's fifteen thousand dollars a day, okay? Is the last time I heard it quoted, the total cost per patient per day in critical care. And just think, if it was from Lyme disease, okay, so Lyme disease can cause cardiac issues, I see that all the time. Lyme disease, we're in one of the most, most highest incidences and rising incidences of Lyme disease in the entire world, right here in Kingston. So, if those decisions are being made, some larger municipality somewhere else where the Lyme disease rates aren't as high as they are around here per population, you're not going to see much action on Lyme disease. And Dr. Moore happens to be a world leader on Lyme disease prevention. So, you know, if we lose Dr. Moore, we're, you know, that's, he's our number-one asset in that realm. There's so many reasons why this is a really, really dumb move by the province to do this, and I know, you know, times are tight, you're trying to save money, but this is actually going to cost more money in the long run and cause suffering. And my, you know, my profession as a nurse is to alleviate suffering, so I wholeheartedly support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think it's going to pass. Councillor Hutcheson, do you, do you want to speak to? We still have two more motions to go. So, why don't we call the vote on new motion number one? And that carries. I will now ask for a motion to extend the meeting, please, to finish the agenda. Moved by councillor Bowham, seconded by councillor Neal. Can you speak to the motion? Hold on one second. Mr. Clerk, can I see your form? Yes, councillor Chappell, you have the floor.
I just want to point out that if we had not spent so much time on issues that are not relevant to the municipal space, we would already be finished our council meeting this evening, and that, for that reason, I'll be voting against the motion.
Okay, thank you. So, we will call the vote. Takes two-thirds to pass. And that carries by a vote of ten to three. Okay, on to new motion number two. Moved by councillor Chappell, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. Whereas radio communication facilities are regulated and approved under the authority of Industry Canada, and whereas Industry Canada requires proponents to consult with municipalities, and whereas the city of Kingston became a member of the Canadian Radio Communications Information and Notification Service, Servis d Information et de Notification en Radio Communication Canadienne in twenty sixteen, and whereas CRINS, CINRC processes radio communication facility proposals on the city's behalf, including the public consultation component, and whereas section twelve of bylaw number two thousand six dash seventy-five, a bylaw to delegate various planning approvals to staff and to adopt certain procedures for the processing of planning applications subject to delegated authority as amended, states that city council shall retain all powers and authority with respect to the issuance of a municipal statement of concurrence for radio communication facilities when referred by the director of planning, building and licensing services, and all powers and authority with respect to the issuance of municipal statement of non-concurrence for radio communication facilities. And whereas proposals for radio communication facilities at eleven thirty-eight Sidnum Road and twelve forty-five Midland Avenue have raised concerns among residents because of the proximity of the proposed structures to existing residential dwellings, therefore be resolved that the CRINS, SINRC reports that are prepared for the properties at eleven thirty-eight Sidnum Road and twelve forty-five Midland Avenue be brought forward to council for a decision regarding the municipal statement of concurrence or non-concurrence. Councillor Chappell, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, before I make any comments on this, I'd like to thank staff for their excellent work on helping champion and navigating this process. There has not been a new cellular tower proposed since, I think, two thousand sixteen, so it was bringing a large group of people together to understand how to navigate this because ultimately, the decision is made by Industry Canada. The proposal of these two specific locations, I believe there are seven or eight cell towers being proposed for our city through Rogers Communications with a plan to expand the fiveG network. Of the locations that were selected, two of them are in close proximity to residences that, and as I presented a petition this evening with seventy-nine signatures for the Sidnum Road location, petitioning, asking city council to intervene or at least voice our objection. What this motion effectively does is allows staff to come back, or encourages staff to come back and report with the findings of the CRINS consultancy group that we utilize that is the public vehicle, that is an aggregator for all public commentary, and then we have an opportunity to look over the report and make a decision on of concurrence or non-concurrence with regarding, with regards to the proximity of the cell tower, everything from ice falling on a nearby building to, to where the structure's located in the proximity of the bedrooms and what have you with this constant twenty-four-hour electromagnetic radiation. So, your support on this motion would be greatly appreciated so that we can continue the dialogue and demonstrate to our citizens that we take their health concerns very seriously. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neal.
Yes, just very quickly, I'm glad that you've recognized that because this, before twenty sixteen, before we joined this organization, we had a lot of public frustration because it would come through planning and then to council with a recommendation, yet we had no ability to say yes or no to it. And there was heightened expectation, those of us that were on planning at the time, where you'd have a public meeting, you'd have a large number of people that would come out to argue against it, and it was very hard for them to realize that council could do nothing about it. It was totally up to the federal government to decide, and usually, they decided whatever way the industry wanted them to decide. With this organization, I think they do a little With this organization, I think they do a little bit better job, because there's power in numbers, and this organization represents a very large number of municipalities. But I don't, I just want to suggest that we need to make that abundantly clear to people, that we can't raise expectations when we don't have control over the ultimate decision. But I will support this motion, because I think we should give the public an opportunity to weigh in on this, and we should be able to do the same. But ultimately, it'll be the federal government that makes the decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Osterhoff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I just want to echo the words of Counselor Chappell and commend him for the work, the quick response really to the concern of the citizens, and I want to commend obviously staff for the help. This is all we can do, but it's really important that we stand with the community, and also I want to commend the community for their work, really banded together quickly and made everyone aware of what's happening, and I believe that good can come from this, and that we'll see some positive results, and we'll be a safer community for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchison.
Briefly, everything that Counselor Neal said was an accurate description of what went on. But in addition, we had as part of this a fear about causes of cancer from the emissions of the waves from the communications tower. Turned out, that was not scientific, okay? Ironically enough, public health did the research, wasn't the right kind of waves being emitted to allow for a conclusion that it had anything to do with cancer. So I'm going to support this, because I understand the concern of the counselors, and I take that seriously. And it's really a ton of work to work it through. I remember going to extra meetings and listening to people and being half persuaded. Then public health looked at it and poof, disappeared. Don't know if this is exactly the situation, but should keep that in mind, I would suggest, and maybe try to prepare people for what's going to happen. So, but nevertheless, the concern is genuine on their behalf and also on the counselors, and I think we should support them, so I'll vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll call the vote on new motion number two. And that carries. Number three, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hill. Whereas the aggression carried out with assault weapons or handguns in the committing of crimes and massacres across Canada would have been much diminished, and lives saved had such guns not been available to the perpetrator. And whereas in 2018, the Toronto and Montreal City Councils passed resolutions requesting the federal government to prohibit the availability, sale, private possession of handguns, assault rifles, and semi-automatic guns in Canada, with the exception of police services or other law enforcement entities. And whereas Canada has been victimized by instances of mass murder where the perpetrator had use of assault weapons. And whereas Bill C. 71 currently does not prohibit private possession of assault weapons or handguns, and whereas according to Statistics Canada, violent crimes involving weapons increased by thirty-three percent between 2013 and 2016, and sixty percent of these crimes involve handguns. And whereas according to police and provincial authorities across the country, illegally purchased firearms are now the source of the majority of weapons seized in the context of criminal activities, having been stolen from legal owners or illegally sold. Whereas the report published by Statistics Canada on November 22, 2017 specifies that the number and rate of homicides committed with guns is increased for a third consecutive year in Canada. Whereas according to the Canadian Women's Foundation, Canadian households, the presence of firearms in the home is the single greatest risk factor for lethality of domestic violence. Whereas the Association of Canadian Police Chiefs have historically taken positions for better gun control in Canada, therefore be resolved that the City Council of Kingston asks the federal government to strengthen Bill C. 71, including the prohibition of the private possession of assault weapons, semi-automatic weapons, and handguns, with the exception of police services or other law enforcement entities, and that this motion be shared with the Right Honorable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada, the opposition party leaders, the minister, and critics of public safety and emergency preparedness, and that this motion be shared with the Premier of Ontario, the provincial opposition party leaders, and our MPPs, Randy Hillier and Ian Arthur. Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. This motion has been about eight months in the making as a result of requests by a constituent on this particular issue, and sorry, it has taken so long to get here. It also happens to be, because within those eight months, Montreal and Toronto passed motions, so this is also in solidarity with them, and just recently also in solidarity with health workers who were protesting here in Kingston against gun violence. And so just to start off, we're going to start with a little bit of history here. December 6, 1989, I was in engineering school, and that's when I first heard about the shooting in Ecole Polytechnique in Montreal. And when you do some research on that, this guy actually bought his guns quite legally, and the gun that he actually used was called a Beretta CX-4 Storm, and is a semi, and is a pistol caliber semi-automatic carbine. That's a description from the manufacturer. On June 14, 2014, in Moncton, the guy who actually used that gun, killed three police officers, had a valid permit. He had it five years ago. The gun that was used was a Polytechnologies M305 308 caliber semi-automatic rifle. Also, that's the description of the manufacturer. And the last example is the Quebec mosque shooter of January 29, 2017. This guy, he used a gun called the .58 Sporter semi-automatic rifle and a nine-millimeter Glock 17 Gen IV semi-automatic pistol. Again, these are the descriptions of the manufacturers. He had had his license for two years before that incident. What this says to me is that the gun laws at this time were not able to distinguish between people who have no problems with guns, and never will, from people who are extremely angry, misogynistic, terrorists, or just plain crazy. That suggests that there is something wrong with our gun laws. They may be extremely onerous, but then so are a lot of things in our society. We do license cars and drivers, and when there are changes that are required because of change in circumstances, we change the laws. For example, I got my driver's license at sixteen. You can't do that anymore, because the laws change, situations change. Right now, some, two things have changed in Ontario very recently that can add to the problems of guns and people who may be on the fringes or about to snap, not necessarily people who are law-abiding and stay law-abiding. And that is the legalization of cannabis and the more prevalent availability of alcohol. And just like laws are changing with regards to driving and driving habits, because these drugs, alcohol and cannabis, adjust your rationality, the same thing needs to happen with guns. And that's part of what this is all about. This happens to be perfectly apropos right now, because we can actually work together to do this. The whole point of this is to make society safer. And changing parts in society, changing aspects of society, mean that laws need to be changed, and sometimes made better, sometimes made worse. In this case, one of the suggestions is that we get rid of them all. I know now that there is a lot of opposition to that notion, but it's not, it's important that we communicate and talk about this, especially at the federal level, because that's where the decisions are being made. In that sense, this is one opinion that's going forward. I hope you guys will support it, but the point is that the laws need to change because the circumstances are changing. And that conversation is much better if we have a conversation, not if we stick to such old-style positions that, no, we can't discuss this at all, it's already too bad. Well, no, the situation is changing, and it needs to, and we essentially need to modernize too. So just to be clear, nobody is coming for anybody's guns. The times are changing, and the laws need to be modernized. Government doesn't work that way. When somebody, when we change the laws with cars and demand seat belts, airbags, and crumple zones, we don't confiscate the old cars. We're not going to be taking away your guns. We're just going to be making it better for future generations, and we're trying to make a safer world. Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I'm going to shock people and be brief. A couple of things that, first of all, I appreciate the presentations that were made There really is a kind of rural-urban divide on the whole issue of gun ownership. I appreciate that. The problems, for the most part, are in larger urban areas, and the vast majority of responsible gun owners either participate in hunting in the rural areas or live in the rural areas, and I appreciate that. I haven't hunted in, I guess it's forty-five years, and I know nothing about guns. But we do have a problem, I see, in this country, and we need to address that problem in a responsible way. Responsible gun ownership is really, really critical. I'm not suggesting that, as in some places that have had major, a major incident like Australia, that we just try to ban all guns, gun ownership. However, there are serious problems, primarily in urban areas, that we need to address. And what's, this motion is attempting to do is to address, is suggest to the federal government to address these. We're probably too late. One of the speakers said that we're, the federal government will probably bring this forward, this may arrive on their desk afterwards. I'm going to argue against the idea that this is just a federal concern. Gun violence in Canada is a safety issue. And we're responsible, we may not be responsible for gun licensing or gun policy, but we're responsible for public safety. So I'm not going to apologize to anybody. I'm sorry to my colleagues who are expecting an apology, because this isn't a municipal issue. This is a health and safety issue, so I will reserve the right to speak to it. I will support this motion, and I hope it passes. I have a sneaking suspicion it may or may not. But the reality is, everybody needs to hear this debate, and everybody in our community, both rural and urban, needs to be represented. And I'm representing my constituents.